I call the 2,415th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card for those at City Hall or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant lists and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the City Recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See the progress made so far, so I'm turning to our announcements. See the progress made so far on the Transportation Systems Plan update at a community event this Thursday, December 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Leeding Library. All attendees will be entered into a raffle for two $50 gift cards to spoken word books. In addition, attendees can pick up a free set of bicycle wheel lights while supplies last. This is a great opportunity to learn about the progress so far while also sharing how you get around and what can be done to improve safety and flow. Changes are coming soon to the city's rules for development in the floodplain. Although the changes are not anticipated to be significant, they may have some impact on activities in the floodplain. To further explain the changes and answer questions, city staff are hosting a public information meeting on Thursday, December 5th from 6 to 7:30 PM at City Hall. This meeting will be held in person, but you can also attend it on Zoom. If you do attend, be sure to stop by the Transportation System Plan community event at the library as well while you're downtown. If you can't attend the December 5th meeting on both of these projects actually, but would like to learn more, please, please stop by Engage Milwaukee to learn more and submit questions for staff to answer. Engage Milwaukee is, oh, the link is there. Engage.MilwaukeeOregon.gov. Okay. Join the tradition of decorating umbrellas and marching through downtown on Saturday, December 7th from 4 to 6 PM. The parade convenes on South Main Street near the post office and the tree lighting is at Historic City Hall. The Umbrella Decorating Contest includes three categories: most creative, most festive, and most Milwaukee. Prizes are awarded in all categories for both adults and children. This year, the festivities also include a bike decorating contest. Participants are invited to decorate their bikes and walk them in the parade. The city continues to host free leaf drop events sessions for those who live within city limits. The next one takes place on Saturday, December 7th from 7 AM to 2 PM at the Public Works Yard on Johnson Creek Boulevard. To participate, please bring along a utility bill as proof of residency. The service is free, but the city is collecting non-perishable food for local families and participants are encouraged, but not required, to donate. Save the date for this year's Winter Solstice and Christmas Ships viewing event at Milwaukee Bay Park on Saturday, December 21st from 4:30 to 7:30. The Llewellyn Neighborhood District Association will be in attendance selling food, hot chocolate, and other treats to raise funding for their annual concerts in the park. Beer Store Milwaukee will be on hand for attendees to purchase local adult craft beverages, warm by the bonfire, or cozy up to one of the small barrel fires, and of course, view the Christmas ships as they make their way up the river and back, which has been a tradition since 1954. And I have to say, in 20 years of going to the, watch the Christmas ships, I think this is a first, we always call that event the solstice. It's never on the solstice, but it is actually on the solstice this year. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And I just want, did want to circle back to this Saturday. The Umbrella Parade and the Tree Lighting is a big, very popular community event. Couple other things are happening on Saturday. A new business downtown called Sonaglow is opening their doors on Saturday. And I believe that Scott Park next to the library is finally going to be open to the public on Saturday. So swing by and check out Scott Park before you, before you come over for the Umbrella Parade. All right, with that, I will read, oh, does anyone else have announcements they needed to make? Okay. I will read the haiku. In honor of the Umbrella Parade, umbrellas aloft, guardians of warmth and cheer, together we stroll. I thank the City Recorder for, for this haiku and for the use of AI to generate this haiku. We have one more haiku that has been submitted by our, our video tech for next meeting and then I think that's going to be the end of the, the haiku. It's been a good run this year. Pardon? Well, nobody submits them.
I think limericks should be the 2020.
If people can't, oh, well, we can have a discussion about that. If people can't submit haiku, I mean, how, how many are going to submit limericks? That's a lot tougher. Anyway, um, uh, so with that, we will proceed to honor the outstanding Milwaukee High School student achievement, student this month. And she'll be introduced by Principal Kellogg.
Well, I want to say I can, I mean, I have this slide up here, but this one is going to be easy for me because I feel like I have gotten to know Stella really well over the last couple of years. And just such a wonderful young lady that I just, I have really enjoyed getting to, to know her. But again, she has a 4.0 and she's going to graduate with 31 credits. You need 24 to graduate and she'll graduate with 31. So there's, there's that piece of that. So in that, that place of that, you can see that she's taking AP courses. She has been in band, choir, theater. She's been in performances. She has played soccer for three years. She has played basketball for three years. She's working at the Windhorse right down the street. She, I mean, it's just these pieces that, you know, in National Honor Society, 4.0, I mean, just the pieces about giving back to the community. And when you look at some of the things that staff members, I have more that I didn't put on here that I'll share with Stella later, but Stella is an incredibly talented and hardworking student who combines her disciplines as a multi-sport athlete and an exceptional vocalist to achieve excellence. Her curiosity drives her continuous learning, while her thoughtful leadership fosters inclusivity and respect within our community, making her an invaluable asset to any team. And that was by Willie Dolan, who is our choir director. And then Ms. Fusen, who is one of our English teachers that had her in her sophomore year. And when I, we were talking about this, Stella is a Renaissance woman. Bright, responsible, vivacious, inquisitive, and she's a leader. And so those pieces, those are words of high praise. And then Mr. Church wrote Stella saying the Star Spangled Banner before the kickoff of her senior night soccer match, fulfilling a lifelong held dream and the nexus of her skills and interests in athletics as a performer. Stella has played soccer and basketball throughout high school and also performs in the band, choir, and onstage in musicals. She is a multi-talented, she's multi-talented, juggles participation in sports and her creative pursuits and rigorous academics with great success. She is a star onstage, on the field, on the court, and in the classroom. And I would echo all of those pieces. So when I, when Stella asked me to write a letter of recommendation, that was really easy to be able to do. Bring so many qualities to our community. And I think if you talked with any of her friends, she, they would, they would echo with some of these things that the adults said in our community. So I'm going to let Stella talk a little bit about what her future plans are. And she's starting to get all of her acceptances, so she's got some decisions to make.
First, thanks for, oh, yeah, thank you. Thanks for your kind words. I haven't, that was really cool. Oh, good. Um, I hope to be, my dream career is to be a marketing manager for musicians, so like bands, solo artists, things like that. I want to be in the marketing world. And in terms of colleges and where I want to go, my top choice is Belmont University in Nashville, Tennessee. And I would graduate with a bachelor's in business administration. And then as far as other schools, I've applied to Drexel, Columbia College Chicago, DePaul, University of Vermont, U of O, and Fordham. And as of right now, I'm accepted to Belmont, DePaul, Columbia College of Chicago, and U of O, and I've gotten some pretty good scholarships to all those. So that was very exciting, but it'll all be about how financially it stuff goes. But I hope to end up in Belmont because Nashville is a very cool musical opportunity-filled city that excites me. So, yeah.
Well, that's exciting. Yeah, that's super exciting. I look at your, I looked at the list of all the things you did and I wondered how you look so well rested because it doesn't seem like you have any time to sleep. Especially you're, you're working at Windhorse on top of that. Maybe that's it. You drink a lot of coffee.
Tried to cut back.
I do actually have a neighbor here in Milwaukee whose daughter is a Belmont grad. So she, and in fact, she's going to Nashville for, for Christmas. So if you want to talk to a Belmont grad, I can probably hook you up.
I really do. That would be awesome.
Okay. Well, yeah, amazing, well-rounded, you know, the sports, the music, the athletics, the government leadership, I mean, all the things. So really, it's really always impressive. The students are always impressive, but you're super impressive with all, all the things you do. I will let each of the councilors ask questions or make comments as they would like. Council President, you want to start?
Belmont is a great school. I had a childhood friend who was the Director of Communications there for many years. And I had never really heard of Belmont, but once she took that job, it seemed like a really great place. So that sounds like a great choice. And Nashville is a wonderful spot. That's coming from a guy from Tennessee. So I would like to ask you to introduce these people who you were with.
That's easy, very easy. I can do that. This is my dad, Jeff Gatos. He, he's also a musician. He's part of the reason I'm a musician. He's played tuba for a long time. And so we play, we try to play music together, although we need to play more. It's kind of a problem. We should play more. But he's a big supporter. This is my mom, Casey Gatos. She's a singer, although she would never call herself that. But I always, I always say that. And she's the reason I love to sing, which is a big part. And then this over here, she's not behind me, but she is part of them over there. This is my sister Ruby. She's a freshman in high school. So now we go to the same school, which is exciting. She's one of my best friends. Yeah.
That's great. Well, you've, you've done a lot individually, but it always helps when you got a great cheering section. So I wanted to give them some recognition as well. Congratulations on all that you've done and all that's ahead of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
First, Stella, congratulations on everything, all your accomplishments. I mean, it's quite a list there. And, you know, I'm particularly amazed by the music just because it's, you know, music is so crucial. Really, I mean, especially for me, I listen to music when I'm in a tough mood. So it's a little bit of light and some darkness sometimes. So I appreciate you. So I appreciate you spending so much of your time and your energy on, on that because it's, it's definitely needed. A question for you, why, what about, why marketing for musicians in particular? What about maybe taking your talents?
Well, I, so since a very young age, I always said, oh, you know, what do you want to do when you grow up? I want to be a performer. I want to be a musician. And I've kind of, you know, you tell yourself one thing for so long, you just have to believe it. And so I told myself that for so long that I'd never explored anything else. And I recently had someone who I really admire say that if you want to be, like, she, she's a teacher, and she told her students, if music is the only thing you can see yourself doing, go for it. If there's even a sliver of you that can see anything else, indulge in that other thing. Because we need people like, true musicians are going to go for just music. And we need those people, but the people who see the sliver need to indulge the sliver. And I thought that was really interesting, and I've never bothered to indulge the sliver. And we recently at my work hired a marketing manager. And I remember kind of thinking, while narcissistic, I think that a lot of, of like finding your passions comes from, oh, I can do that better. And I think, I remember kind of watching her and thinking, I think maybe I could do this better. Like I have a lot of ideas. And so I realized I really enjoy, I think it's something that I'm very interested in and I'm also would be very good at. And so I want, but I want to continue staying connected through music. And I think it would be cool to work with musicians, but not necessarily with the music part. Because I still want to do music on my own time and perform on the weekends and things like that, but I want to work with musicians, but maybe pursue another type part of that career. So, yeah.
That's awesome. And I, I think we can all relate to this slight narcissism. So again, I, congratulations and to mom and dad and sister. You know, that, that's what it takes. I, I'm a new parent myself, and again, it's, it's a lot of work. But having two parents behind you, so caring, so loving, and doing such a great job of raising a child, I mean, we need more of that. So I appreciate you too as well and you for being a support.
Stella.
Becca.
You're the best. Well, I've, I've known you almost as long as I have known your sister.
Yes.
And thank you for letting her sit up here for a little bit. You can take the script home. No, I don't know. So I know Ruby because we have a kiddo who's also a freshman at the high school this year, and it's, it's such a big time. You're finding all your interests, you're finding your voice, you're finding your ability to manage time. And I think what you have done with your experience and your time in high school has just been such a shining example of how you do that well and how you balance things well. And I guess I would wonder if you have advice for people who are just starting out there, who are also trying to explore all these things, but, you know, really try to determine what their path is and, and when, when to say yes, when to say no about, you know, taking on all these things, because what you've done is amazing.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. But also, I'm awful at balance, and it has taken a long time to get anywhere near where I am right now. And I've realized something I, from my high school experience, I've noticed that I live in black and white. There's no gray area in my world. And something about high school has taught me that I have, I have to really work to try to find the gray area because that's not something I'm good at. So for me, that was, for me, my gray area, finding that, is in journaling. I get a lot of that from journaling because I don't have to, my one rule in journaling is I don't filter. Like there's no filter. And so all the, the thoughts that I'm feeling of like guilt that I'm not doing enough or guilt that I'm doing too much can be expressed on a piece of paper. And when I read it back, I can know, oh, maybe I'm, maybe I'm taking on too much, or maybe I'm saying yes too much. Because while I've done a lot of things, there's been a lot of nights where I come home and I just sit in bed and I'm like, I'm done, I can't do it. And then I go back the next day and do it again. And so there's a lot of learning what you can do. And I think part of that for me is also when I commit to something, I'm going to finish it. So maybe there's like two or three months that are really, really hard, but knowing that I can fix that and do it better the next year is what makes it all worth it. So like finding the gray area after the fact, while can sometimes be tiring, is what has worked for me. And so I'll try it and I'll push myself and say, okay, maybe I need to let go just a little, just a little, and then try it again the next year. So, yeah, that's how, yeah.
That's, I think that's advice that we can all live by. Because especially when you're doing so many things that are extroverted, performing and, and acting and playing music and in all these leadership roles, I think, you know, having that, that reflective piece that's a little more introverted is probably a really good balance, even though you seem good at balance. And then I don't, all right, would you be okay entertaining a question from your sister?
Absolutely.
I don't have a question.
How about the question?
I would agree with you are also my best friend and like the person I look up to most. So.
Make me cry. Love you too.
I know, I can't say anything more because I'm.
She could say something more. She'd probably ask me like what my favorite color is. It's green right now.
Beginning of the meeting, I neglected to point out that one of our councilors, Counselor Anderson, is participating via Zoom. So I want to look to him to see if he would like to chime in here.
If you do it, Stella, this is owed to your Zoom classes, so this should be all that for you. I just have to start by saying, like, I love doing the Milwaukee High School Student of the Month. Have you seen some of the most amazing students who are coming from Milwaukee? Still, you know, exception. This is, your resume doesn't even fit, I don't know if you can see, but it doesn't even fit on the whole screen. You've done so much great stuff with your four years. You, you should be really proud. And wherever you go, I guess you're going to make a big impact. I want to switch gears a little bit as compared to our last questions. I don't know if you're staying for the next few hours in our city council meetings. You're welcome, but you probably should not do better things to do. But later on, we're talking about what our city goals are going to be, where we want to put our energy and efforts towards over the next three years. If you had a magic wand and you could decide what the city's three focuses are over the next three years, what do you think we should do? What could we do better? What, what should we turn our attention to?
Wow, that's a very good question, very loaded question. I, I think when you asked, when you asked that, my first thought was community. I think a thriving community is a thriving city and location. So like some of the best, like one of the reasons I come back to my school, the school I want to go to, Nashville, one of the reasons I love Nashville is like the stereotypical southern hospitality. Like you walk in, everyone greets you. Like there's a door being held open for you, there's a handshake, there's a hug, no matter where you go. And I think that's such a warm and fuzzy feeling. And I think that's one of the reasons that makes like Nashville such a special place. So I think building that community, and obviously, you know, we have the Umbrella Parade, like things like that are doing that. And I think it just, so like if I had a magic wand, we would just have more community. However, I'm not, like, I feel like we're doing a lot of those things, which I think is very cool. My second thing, I don't know, that's a hard question. If I had a magic wand, it'd be pretty cool if the whole city was environmentally friendly. Like if that, if we had some sort of something like that, that'd be pretty sick, although I'm not sure exactly how that would all work, but it'd be awesome. The last thing, see, this is a very personal one because I am a high school student. I really wish the kids stopped disrupting the food carts. Because I heard rumors they're going to move, and as a high school student, it's awesome that the food carts are right there and the students don't treat them very nice. And as a kid who does, it's like so awesome to have the food carts right there. So if I had a magic wand, I'd, I'd say that all the students have to treat the food carts with a lot of respect and kindness and the workers. Buy, don't just buy the cheapest thing, and please tip. Can you tip? Yeah, that would be my magic wand.
And Stella, I love you with all my heart. The way it stands now, I, I'm for them moving.
Oh, yeah, no, if it's better for them, I want them to move. But if my magic wand, I'd want them to stay and everyone just treat them with respect. So that's my magic wand.
And I think the principal wants them to actually go back to class after.
Yeah, that, that probably helped too. Great, yes, yes, yes.
Well, we've got our marching orders.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, and thank you, Principal, for bringing Stella in to us. I will say, I'm very touched by the closeness of the two sisters. I had a sister who was four years younger than me, and I would never have said she was my best friend. I mean, I might. I think we're closer now than we were at that age, but yeah. So I think it's awesome that you guys are so close. That's beautiful. And if you, I'll count on Principal Kellogg to get me your contact info, and I will try to make that connection to my friend's daughter Hannah, who went to, went to Belmont and is still in Nashville. So, and with that, I will read the proclamation. The City of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Stella Gaidos. Let it be known to all that on this third day of December 2024, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, recognize this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation. Just play. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And as Counselor Anderson said, you are welcome to stay, but it's pretty rare that someone, we did have one, we did have one student decide to stay once, but it's not very often. So the next thing on our agenda is the Christmas ships proclamation. And I understand the gentleman from the Christmas ships who comes pretty, pretty much every year is unfortunately unable to make it this year.
That's right. The co-fleet leader, Steve Kridland of the Christmas ships fleet apologizes, late breaking, he has come under the weather and sent his best wishes and appreciation on behalf of the Christmas ships for the city council's annual recognition of their organization. Every year, they super enjoy coming down the rivers, the Columbia and the Lamont, and they have a, a whole full fleet of like 20 days where they go down all around the metro area. And this is the only community that consistently recognizes them and appreciates them and builds events and activities around it. So on behalf of the ships, they just want to say thank you for the proclamation. And I believe Mayor Beatty, you read in the announcements earlier, the winter solstice event highlighting when the ships will be coming down the Lamont and through Milwaukee Bay. But in addition, when you read the, the proclamation, there are of course the dates in there when they will come by Milwaukee and other dates beyond just the solstice, so.
I've got nothing to add. That was perfect, Scott.
Okay, great. Well, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Christmas ships parade is a 70-year-old tradition, tradition. And whereas the Christmas ships will sail to destinations on the Columbia and Willamette Rivers between December 5th and December 22nd, 2024. And whereas the Christmas ships will sail to Milwaukee Bay on December 10th, 13th, 17th, 19th, and 21st, 2024. And whereas the City of Milwaukee has planned a solstice celebration in Milwaukee Bay Park on the evening of December 21st to observe the Christmas ships as a community. And whereas the City of Milwaukee wishes to thank the Christmas ships for bringing their annual floating parades to and through Milwaukee Bay. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 5th through 22nd, 2024, as Christmas ship stays in Milwaukee and hereby extends the city's warmest wishes for a successful parade season. Okay, great. I am looking forward to the start of that. A week from tonight, I think. So, community comments, I know we have at least one, so I do need to read the script this time. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the November 19th comments, Ms. Seeger?
Thank you, Mayor. We had no community comments on November 19th. I did want to address a comment that was made on November 5th. That was from Shelley Hicks regarding a citation her son had received. And I just wanted to provide counsel and update that our court staff have been in communication with Ms. Hicks to resolve the issue per state law and city processes. And we have not heard follow-up on that, so I believe the, the staff correspondence on that has resolved the issue. We did receive a couple pieces of correspondence specific to agenda items tonight. Those were distributed in the packet, and they are about the Monroe Green, or sorry, the Greenway placemaking item that we discussed in the work session and the fee schedule update later this evening.
Okay. Thank you. All right. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card found on the table just inside the chamber door. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak, and when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you are calling in through Zoom and would like to make a comment, dial star nine to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion, but the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments which require follow-up. So the speaker I have is Amy Ryman. Is Amy in the room? Yes, okay. Please come forward. And you need to, there's a button on the microphone that turns a little red light on, and so, uh, probably that one is easier without the computer in your way. Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Thank you. That's a hard act to follow Stella, so please accept my apologies before I read what I've prepared. Thank you and good evening, council members. My wish to speak is in regards to a continual nuisance issue, a noise nuisance that's existing in my area where I live in my cul-de-sac. So I've prepared a, just some verbiage to read through, so I'm very specific and don't go off key. I'm here tonight to ask for action on a property in my neighborhood that has become a hub of repeated and blatant violations of city ordinances. The property at 11164 Southeast 52nd Avenue, Milwaukee, Oregon, has subject, has subjected us to incessant noise, including hydraulic drills, construction compactors, air compressors, nail guns, and sawing, often during after-hour periods when such activities are explicitly prohibited. These violations are not isolated incidents, but a chronic and ongoing problem with multiple witnesses and documented police incidents reports to back up our claims. For years, we've reported these issues to both the Milwaukee Police Department and the city code enforcement, specifically working with Tim Salier. Every time we've called the police about noise complaints, they've directed us to the city code enforcement, Tim. And every single time we've contacted code enforcement, Tim has directed us back to the city police. The cycle has left us with no clear authority to address these problems, leaving our neighborhood in chaos. To make matters worse, the City of Milwaukee Code states that noise and chronic nuisance properties are to be handled by the chief of police or designee, yet no one has informed us who the designee is. The lack of clarity and accountability has left us abandoned by the very system meant to protect us. I must also point out that this property has clearly violated the chronic nuisance code. The code exists for properties like this one, properties that repeatedly and erogenously violate city ordinance and disrupt the safety and peace of our neighborhoods. So I ask, one, why has no action been taken on the chronic nuisance code against this property despite its clear pattern of violations? Two, what criteria does the city use to designate a property as a chronic nuisance and how has a property not qualified? Three, who within the city is responsible for initiating chronic nuisance actions and why they have not acted in this case? I also ask the following. Who is responsible for enforcing noise and nuisance violations, particularly after hours? Is it the police, the city code enforcement, or someone else? Why has no one taken responsibility for this property and how does the city plan to fix this communication breakdown? What penalties or actions will the city take to address these repeated violations and ensure that this property is held accountable? Finally, I'd like to emphasize that we, the residents, pay taxes to fund these departments and your positions on this council, yet our tax dollars are not being effectively used if complaints like these are ignored and ordinances are not enforced. It is unacceptable for public resources to be wasted while neighborhoods like ours are left to fend for themselves. This council has been given the power to ensure our city remains safe, livable, and fair, yet the power means nothing if it isn't used to protect residents like myself and my neighborhood. You have the authority to act, so I ask that you provide guidance and act for this situation. You have the authority to act, so I ask that you provide guidance and act for this situation. Investigate the property, enforce the chronic nuisance code, and help us as a citizen of the community hold those accountable that should be held accountable. The residents of this neighborhood deserve better. We've waited years. This has been going on since 2019 with documented evidence and proofs and follow-up with the police and with Tim. We've submitted complaints, we've provided evidence, we've done everything we've been asked to do, and it's time for the city to step up and protect the people who follow the rules and contribute to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that concern forward, and I know, I'm sure I speak for all of council, that we will look forward to some illumination of the situation from the city manager at our next meeting. Thank you. Do I have anyone else who's wanting to give public testimony? Mr. Stauffer, do we have anyone on the line who's wanting to give public testimony?
We do have Zoom participants, but I see no hands raised.
No raised hands. Okay. Okay, well, with that, we will go on to consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council, November 5th, 2024 work session, and November 5th, 2024 regular session, a resolution authorizing an increase in the project authorization for a public improvement contract with Taponi Inc. for the Meek Street pipe installation north phase, file number CIP 2016-y11. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item?
Counselor Anderson's hands raised.
Counselor Anderson has his hand up. You're kind of cutting -- you're kind of cutting out.
Oh, there's a scriminer error with Counselor Adama, not Anderson.
Again?
If we could correct that, I think we're good again.
I searched for it. I did a keyword search. We'll clean it up. We'll clean it up. I apologize about that, Counselor.
Okay.
You are totally good.
With that, I will entertain a motion. Which side are our motions on? This side? Okay.
Sure. I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
A second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. None heard, but consent agenda is unanimously approved. And the next item on our agenda is an update on the Monroe and Washington Greenway with our city engineer Jennifer Garbely and civil engineer Tanya Batty. Batty? Okay. Well, people pronounce mine that as Patty sometimes, too. Yeah.
We're here to give a update on Monroe/Washington Greenway. Actually, I think we're calling it the Washington-Monroe Greenway, sorry.
Yeah, this portion.
This is Tanya Batty, and she's our civil engineer, and she's taking the lead on this project, so I'm going to let her start it off.
Great. Thank you all for being here today to discuss updates to the Washington-Monroe Greenway. Today in our presentation, we're going to go over the project. We'll discuss some public feedback that we've received, some public engagement that we have planned moving forward, and then funding and schedule for the remainder of the project. So as a reminder, the Monroe Greenway in the portion that runs through Milwaukee will connect the trolley trail on the west side of town, all the way through over the railroad tracks, around the Seven Acre Apartment track that's been constructed, and then cut down to Washington Street, go up Garrett, across on Monroe, and then it will meet up with the portion of the Monroe Greenway that's being constructed by Clackamas County, starting at Linwood Avenue. And that portion, I believe, is to go to construction this summer. So the portion that we'll be talking about tonight is the section along Washington Street, Garrett Drive, and Monroe Street. The section around Seven Acres Apartments has already been constructed, and we will be putting out a request for qualifications for the design of the central portion later or early next year. This is an overview of the Washington-Monroe section, which covers Washington, Garrett, and Monroe. The orange dots are the intersections -- intersection is the wrong word. The corners where we plan to put in new or improve the existing sidewalk intersections so that they will have ADA compliant curb ramps. The green sections are where we will be placing new sidewalks, and there's a little purple section at the curve on 52nd Avenue where we'll actually be moving the road a little bit south. We're doing that so that we don't have to work outside of the right-of-way, the current city right-of-way. Any questions about this slide? Or just keep?
Last piece, purple. So is that the curve at 52nd? Okay.
Right there at 52nd. Because of the way that the road curves, for us to be able to get the sidewalk in on that side, we would have to move out of the right-of-way and into people's private property. And so to avoid doing that, we're going to end up moving the road a little bit further southwest and go into the right-of-way on the other side of the road.
We're shifting the road basically to keep our sidewalk within current city right-of-way.
Okay. But we're keeping the sidewalk entirely on the north?
Yes.
Okay. For that section, we swap over at Stanley.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we head towards Linwood on the south side to pick up Wichita Park.
Yep. We have raised crosswalks going in at Garrett where the Greenway will cross Monroe Street to go to the north side. There's a raised crosswalk there to help slow down traffic and to give people a real place where they feel like they belong. And then there's another raised crosswalk at Stanley when the sidewalk crosses from the north side of the street down to the south side of the street, and that's in conjunction with the Stanley Greenway that we're working on. Some of the public feedback that we've received so far, a lot of folks are concerned about trees getting taken out as a result of this Greenway going in and the sidewalks going in. I've met with the city arborist a few times. We've gone around, we've looked at the trees, and none of them need to be removed. There are a few areas where we have large established trees close to the sidewalk, and so in those areas, we've either narrowed the sidewalk, bumped out the sidewalk into the road a little bit further. There will be construction directions to hand dig in those areas so that we don't damage the trees as we pull out the existing sidewalk and put in the new sidewalk. All of the work that we are conducting will be in the public right-of-way, which I know has also been a concern for people. We will be requesting, I believe, 23 temporary construction easements. The majority of those are about tying into existing driveways. So where people have a driveway and then we're putting in the sidewalk, the new slope of the driveway could be more than 15%. And so to bring that down to 15% so that it's easier for people to drive, we're going to tie back further onto their property just to reduce those slopes. And then, like I said earlier, in order to avoid going on to private property at the 52nd Street curves, we're going to end up shifting the Monroe Street a little bit south so that we can stay in the public right-of-way. Some of the placemaking and street markings that we've talked to people about, we are going to include green striping. You can see in the picture on the top left how we've got some green striping going through that intersection. There are sheros that will be painted on the ground. We're going to have wayfinding signage. We have two diverters going in as a result of this project. The first one is already in. It's at the intersection of Monroe and Linwood, and that has noticeably reduced traffic on Monroe. The second diverter that's going to go in will be at the intersection of Oregon 224 and Monroe. That's a project that's being led by ODOT. The new intersection will be right-in, right-out only for vehicles, and there will be a pedestrian refuge in the middle of 224 so that people can make that crossing more safely. I found out today that ODOT has reached out about doing another open house about that, so more information coming soon.
And is that supposed to be in construction next summer?
That'll be -- yeah, that's going out this -- yeah, this summer.
I think they're going out to bid in January.
2025, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're looking at doing another open house with them possibly in the spring. Traffic calming measures. Some of our traffic calming measures include adding bulb-outs. Those are both to facilitate the trees that are currently along the route, as well as to narrow the road and encourage people to go slower. We have heard a lot of feedback that some of the ADA ramps that we put in, people have been damaging their cars on the bulb-outs because it's not part of their usual route as they make various turns. So we are planning to put reflectors on them to make them more visible so that people don't inadvertently do damage to their cars due to the new traffic patterns. Other traffic calming measures include the sheros, the road narrowing, speed cushions will be placed along the route, and then we have those two raised crosswalks as well at Garrett and at Stanley so that people will slow down. We're adding stop signs to 40th and 42nd. And I think those are the big ones.
Those are the big ones.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you. We've also gotten quite a bit of feedback about the parking situation and how it's going to change. I apologize, it's a little confusing because Washington is on top and Monroe is on the bottom, but in real life, Monroe is north and Washington is south of Monroe. But on Washington, there's -- you can kind of see there's some green highlighting. Those areas are going to remain unchanged. We're not making the road any narrower. On the left side, between 37th and 40th, that is, according to our public work standards, wide enough for two-way traffic and one-sided parking, and that will continue to be the case. The orange section next to it, between 40th and 42nd, is currently 23 and 1/2 feet wide, which is not wide enough for street parking. We will be narrowing the road to 20 feet, which is our public work standard for two-way traffic, and adding signage so that people know that parking is not permitted on that section. I would like to be clear that it is currently not wide enough for parking, but people park there anyway. And so the new signage should help with that and make sure that we can maintain emergency vehicle access and stay compliant with our public work standards.
This also allows us to save several trees in this section by being able to place that sidewalk a little bit in, which is awesome. They're beautiful, amazing trees, so we're not having to pull those down or anything like that.
Yep. The blue section east of 42nd is where we will be going from two-sided parking down to one-sided parking. So that is the area where we will be losing a little bit of parking on one side of the street. And then, once the sidewalks tie into the existing sidewalks about midway through that block, it goes back to green and up through Garrett because we won't be making any changes in that area. The road will stay the same. You can see Monroe is completely in blue. That is because, once we put the sidewalks on one side, we will be losing parking on that side of the road. Currently, both sides of the road are unimproved, and so you can park in the shoulder. Once we add the curb and the sidewalk and the planar strips, we will be losing parking on one side. So between Garrett and Stanley, where the Greenway runs on the north side of the road, we will maintain parking on the south side, and between Stanley and Linwood, when the sidewalk is on the south side of the road, we will be maintaining parking on the north We've also heard that people would like more public engagement, and so we had Engagement Look Ahead Outlook developed and has been posted to the website. The short version is that we will continue to inform community members. People can still sign up for the mailing list. We've had a lot of people sign up for the mailing list already. We will be sending out at least quarterly email notifications. And then, in addition, when people email me directly or email Save Milwaukee or Engage With Us through the Engage Milwaukee page, all of those communication opportunities are monitored by me and by other staff, and we do respond to them on a pretty regular basis. We have the Monroe Greenway engineering website, and we also, just before the September 2024 open house, opened up an Engage Milwaukee page that people can use as well, and both of those pages are monitored and updated on a regular basis. We also plan to host a construction open house once we're closer to construction so that people can have a little bit more information about what they should expect over the coming months, once it's a little more ahead of us. I'll get to the timeline here in a minute, but I think if we did a construction open house at this point, it would fall right out of everybody's heads before we actually got to the construction part. As far as the homeowners go, we are still working with homeowners who live along the route. We will be in touch with them about the contemporary construction easements, about impacts to their driveway, impacts to their property. I know that there are a number of people who have unpermitted driveways or driveways that are not up to code, and so we will be in communication with them before those changes take place, so that there are no surprises. We plan to do this through mailers and outreach, and of course, we have the Engage Milwaukee page still has a function open. If you live along the Greenway, you can use that to ask us questions directly.
When you say that about driveways that aren't up to -- what do you mean, that they're not up to code?
Like, there's one house in particular I'm thinking of that they have -- the driveway is poured, I'm going to say, like, 40 feet wide. And because there's no -- because there's no curb or anything, it's just like an unimproved side of the road, they can use that entire 40 feet. And our public work standards state that our driveways are maximum 20 feet for a single residence. So we're going to end up placing a 20-foot-wide hole or like a gap in the curb so that they can still access their property, but they're going to lose that extra 20 feet that they are currently using as a driveway. They'll have to go in in turn or do something else or drive over the curb.
Oh, interesting.
Yep.
There's some people that have multiple -- like, they're using the space as multiple driveways, and that's not allowed up there. So as we bring the space up to code, they're going to have to choose where they want that driveway.
Are they going to incur any additional costs on their end?
No.
No, okay.
I believe -- I mean, at this point, they're already being fined by code enforcement for being out of compliance.
One of them.
Yeah.
This should help them.
This should help. And then for funding and schedule, because this project has taken so long to get off the ground, inflation has taken its toll, we've had to reduce some of our scope, which is unfortunate, and I know that a lot of people are disappointed by that. One of the things that we've done, we were made aware of an opportunity a couple of months ago where the regional flexible fund allocation, which is where we're getting the bulk of the funding for this portion of the project, had a -- I assume had a couple of projects that didn't go through or something happened, but they had a pot of money that was suddenly available for projects that were already approved and were at a certain phase of construction. And this section of the Monroe Greenway fit that criteria, so we went ahead and applied for 1.7 million additional funding dollars, and we should hear back about that in March. And if we were granted that funding, then we'll be able to add some scope back in, which would be great. So we should hear about that additional funding in March, and depending on how that goes, that may impact the rest of the schedule. But at this point, our final design will be submitted and approved by December of 2025. The project will go out to bid hopefully in January of 2026, and we hope to be in construction by summer of 2026.
Mayor Beatty?
Sorry. I guess with questions, I'll start to my left since the movers are on my right.
No questions.
No questions. Counselor Anderson?
I'll work on this.
I'm sorry? Oh, oh, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Costa-Badi?
Sounds like he's talking in a tin can.
It does.
No, no questions. I appreciate -- actually, the only question is -- I'll ask it later. It's more of an internal thing. I just look at the timeline, and I'm like, God, that's a long amount of time. How -- I mean, is there -- are we in danger of losing any more scope between now and 2026 when we start the project? Because I'm assuming, based on what we're hearing at the national level--
This is out of our hands, the schedule. It is being run by ODOT, and they have a lot of process that they have to go through in order before they can put it out to bid. So this is their timeline. Yes, I would say we're in danger of losing more because if the price goes higher, I'll have to cut more if we don't get the additional funding. So we're doing everything we can, but it's not in Milwaukee's hands at this point.
Keep our receipts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Stavros?
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on your first big lead project.
Thank you. I guess I have a question. I mean, a first comment. I guess I have a question, I mean, a first comment. It's exciting to see it, you know, getting closer. It has been about a decade and maybe more than a decade in the making, so the 1.7 million, will add things back in that have been taken out, or it is just, we need it to even make us whole for what you're doing in your plans now?
It would be really helpful for what we're doing because there are some parts of the scope that I think we're gonna have to figure out. The 23 temporary construction easements, I'll be honest, caught us a little bit by surprise. A number of those are coming from, like, they're the ones that have to do with the driveways, and so we backed off on some of those, right? Because originally, we had one for every driveway so that we could tie in nicely, and we ended up having to back off of those to save some money. There are other portions of the project where the existing sidewalk is curb tight, or not curb tight, but like right against the edge of the right of way. And part of the ODOT process that is different than how we would do it if we were doing it internally is that they require a one-foot buffer. So basically, anywhere, you know, there's, if I go back, right here on Garrett Avenue, do you guys see my mouse? You don't.
No.
So at the Garrett Avenue circle, for example, there's, there are no curb ramps there, and so people using the sidewalk just have to fall off a seven- or eight-inch curb. We're like, it would be really great for us to put accessible curb ramps there, but the existing sidewalk is against the right of way, so for us to do that and for them to pull out the existing sidewalk and put in a new sidewalk that ties in, they need a one-foot buffer onto that property so that they can like build the forms for the sidewalk. And in situations like that, it's, it just is what it is.
So we'll know more as we get closer, right? It'll, it'll flush out, you know, especially as ODOT finally accepts the project, they're, they're comfortable with what's being built, then we'll know what pots of money we have left over and how we can apply that to construction.
Yeah.
So.
I think portions of the scope that we would like to bring back include sidewalks on Monroe, west of Garrett, there's like an existing gap.
I will give up time for public comment, Bernie, so.
Yeah, so I know there are gaps on Monroe between 37th and Garrett that people are disappointed had to get cut, but because it isn't part of the main route, we chose to make the primary route a priority. And if we get that additional 1.7 million dollars, we will hopefully be able to add that scope back in.
I'd also like to put a more enhanced crossing at 37th and Washington. That's a busy street.
Yeah.
So I would like to possibly.
Get that flashing beacon.
Potentially a flashing beacon right there. At the moment, that probably won't make it if we don't get additional funds, but we'll plan for it in the future to do it at a later date if we don't get it.
Okay. And then just to clarify the timeline, you said, you know, hoping to bid in January 2026, hoping to start construction that summer, so your construction open house would be spring of that year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's, you know, like, like Ms. Garbley said, we're not managing the construction, so it's all kind of on ODOT's schedule, and.
Right.
That's where we're at.
Right. And, but I did hear that the, I mean, I guess you said that, that the county is going out on their portions, so are they not using ODOT? They're building it themselves?
They're using development dollars from the development agency, so same dollars that we're using for Stanley with the county. That's that pot, so it's revitalization dollars from the county. So yes, they get to move faster.
Faster, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
So yeah, there are several people in the room who maybe want to testify on this. Do yellow cars, I see Scott's gathering those now, okay? Any final comments you want to make before I take public comment? We'll let you come back up if you want to address some of the public comment afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, the, for the public that wants to comment, we'll give you each three minutes. There's a little clock, there's a little timer here, and it goes green, and then it goes yellow when there's 30 seconds left, and it goes red when you're at the end of your three minutes. Okay. Here, so we'll start with Bernie. Please state your name, yeah, that's fine, and just hit the button so that the, it goes red, yeah, and then state your name and city of residence and.
Bernie Shell, Milwaukee, Oregon. It's been nine years that I've been involved in this, and it's been 10 years almost to the day since public meetings on this. I kind of have questions for them because I was under the impression that Garrett Drive was included in the ADA improvements that are coming up past Hector Campbell, around, and then up Garrett. But regardless of that, in November, or February, I brought up rapid flashing beacon lights on 37th and Washington. I brought a model to the last meeting in November and wrote things, but it disappeared in the comments and pictures. There were pictures from February, but not in November. I would like to see if, it sounds like you guys are tight for money, but if that extra million dollars can cough up something for a rapid flashing beacon light on 37th and Washington, I think that's really important. That is a real cluster there where you go onto railroad, and I think it's gonna get worse. That's about all I can think of right now, but I think you ought to listen to Karen because she lives on Washington.
They did say that was, you know, one of the things they would do with the additional money, so, yeah.
I'm all for it.
So we'll all, we'll all hope for the additional money.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to be a rich uncle if I win the lottery.
Okay. Dennis Taroc?
Tar.
Tar, oh, okay, Tar.
Just leaves us on. Hi, I'm Dennis Tar. I live at 3711 Southeast Monroe. And one of the questions that I've, because I'm coming, coming in late on this program, but is there a, on the website, is there another picture that shows what it's gonna look like coming from downtown Milwaukee up to the Seven Acres Carpet Complex? Because the Seven Acres has got that bike path right there. Is there gonna be any continuation of that bike path at all?
Well, that was the part that she alluded to will go out for design in, in the new year, in the new year. That part will go out for design, so that has not been designed yet.
Okay. And the improvement that they've done on Washington Street next to the, next to the high school, is that gonna be an improvement that goes all the way for Washington? Because it's like, it's unbelievable, you almost have to have a four-wheel drive to drive Washington Street from, from the Catholic school up to 224.
Well, I mean, it's under construction, right?
Oh, yeah. But will that be resurfaced eventually?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That was, that's all. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
That's the construction zone, yeah.
I just have a lot of questions. There was one slide that you presented that had, that talked about how you were gonna communicate with residents, and it says a lot of good things, but none of that is really happening. For the Engage Milwaukee, our understanding was that we only had seven days to put in comments, we had no idea that that was, we could continue to get, put comments in there. We, when you had the open house, we had flyers, we had email, we had all kinds of things, but we had no notification of this meeting. Most of the neighbors didn't have information about that. And the way to send comments via email, again, I got several email notifications about this meeting because of my comments on Engage Milwaukee, but only Monday did I get the email that told me that I could, how I could communicate through, via email, I don't know if it was OCR or whatever that is. So that doesn't give very much time, so it just feels like there are a lot of limitations that you put onto our ability to communicate with you, and it doesn't really feel like you listen to anything that we say anyway. And so that's a frustrating part for all, for all of the people on Washington Street, is that the communication with us is almost non-existent. I mean, we've, we've called, we've emailed, we've come and met personally with people, we've made comments in Engage Milwaukee, we had comment cards at the open house, but we don't, we don't get any feedback that you're hearing anything that we're saying. So it's very frustrating, the, the lack of communication. It just feels like, it just makes us feel like you, you don't really care, and you're really affecting our neighborhood. It's, it's going to be a huge impact on our neighborhood that, that feels very invasive and destructive.
Okay, I appreciate your comments. I will say, the, I mean, I'll invite staff to come back up and talk about the communication on this project, but as a general matter, whether it's this project, whether it's a noise complaint, whether it's a, whatever, you know, whether it's a, you know, your trash, well, don't, don't, don't tell us your trash didn't get picked up because we don't really control that, but OCR at milwaukeioregon.gov, OCR stands for Office of the City Recorder. That's this gentleman, and he, he collects, the emails go to him to make sure that they're kept for the public record, but he distributes those to us. So if you want to communicate with us, that's a great address to use. Well, I'm, I say it at every meeting, I'll tell you that. But maybe we need to make it more visible on our website. I mean, there is a city council website page with our individual email addresses as well. So I do think you can find it on the city website if you do some looking around, but maybe we should think about trying to make it more visible. Okay, I have no more public comments, so with that, I'll ask staff if they want to come back up and address any of those comments.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. I'd like to say, yes, you are correct that the flashing beacon is on our wish list, and so if we get the additional funding, we'll be putting it in, and if we don't, then we will be figuring something out because that intersection at 37th or 37th at Washington sees 3,700, 4,700.
It's, we recognize that it needs.
It's a crossing that needs addressing, so that is certainly something that's on our radar.
Before you leave the flashing beacon, can I just ask, I've heard, I've had someone tell me that the figures we quote for the cost of a flashing beacon are crazy and that they can be gotten for $2,000. Can you address what, what's a reasonable, reliable piece of equipment and what the cost of it is?
You're looking at more like $50,000 for the type of RFP that we would be installing at this spot. They must be looking at something significantly less. And we also, is maintained by Clackamas County, and they don't recommend putting in solar. The solar ones are a maintenance nightmare, and so they've asked us to actually put in power, so that means we need to get access to power, and we have to run conduit to connect both of them. So yeah, we're looking closer to 50 grand to install an RFP in our city.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for interrupting, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, that's fine. Once again, you are correct that the central portion is going out for design. We do have one contractor under design, they were out there surveying a couple of months ago, and that's specifically for the portions of the Greenway that will cross the railroad tracks because, you know, working with the railroad is kind of its own situation. So we have, that is already in design. It just started a couple of months ago, and then early next year, we'll be going out for design for the remainder of the central portion. Regarding notice of this meeting, we did put an article in the Milwaukee Pilot notifying that this meeting would be happening. We have an email list, and we also have the Engage Milwaukee email list, there are two separate email lists that you can sign up for, and both of those got notification both a month ago and also on Monday. There was, following the September 2024 open house, we put together a, oh, shoot, the words just left me.
Open house summary?
Open house summary that included all of the written comments we received, all of the email comments that we received, and on the Engage Milwaukee forum, it didn't include the subcomments, but it did include the primary postings on the forum, and all of that was posted, was put together, as well as sort of some high-level overview, I hate to say impressions, but sort of summarizing like the themes of the various comments that we went through. So that summary was upfront. And also, there was a separate appendix for folks who had requested specifically that their emails be included, so that was revised and sent out as well. And that was sent out to both email lists and also has been posted to the Milwaukee Engineering page and to the Engage Milwaukee page, which also have posts notifying people of this presentation. So I would, I would love some ideas for what additional notification we could do so that people understand that we are trying to communicate and that we are hearing what they say.
Well, I think, you know, it sounds like you've checked a lot of boxes. I do think the pilot is generally a good communication. I will note, I have not received my December pilot, so.
It was in the November pilot.
Oh, it was in the November pilot? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, next item, quarterly fee schedule revisions. The public hear, I guess this is our Assistant City Manager? Okay. The public hearing on the proposed fee schedule revision is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate, and consider authorizing the fee schedule changes. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I turn it over to the Assistant City Manager, Joseph Borleo.
Great, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I'm here pinching for our Finance Director, Michael Osborne. Hearts go out to the Osborne family, they had a loss over the holiday, so we're thinking about you, if you, I'm sure he's not watching this, but he should not be, but I'll just let him know that we're here, there with him, I'm pinch hitting, so essentially, what you have before you is something that came to staff as part of a request from Reliable Credit to reduce quarterly parking rates when they're purchased in bulk. This occurred because, I don't know if many of you or if everybody knows, I know some of you know, but the way that this conversation, just to have some history of how we got here today and how I'm before you, is Reliable Credit, I brought up the Ariel, as you can see, it's on Harrison and Main. They own the buildings that Casa de Tamalés, Windhorse, and Roger &amp; Ives are in, they also own that. They also have planning entitlements that have been good for 10 years to raise those, raise those buildings, or that building, and create a parking space or parking lot, a private parking lot for their business. It's been on the books and is on the books through next year. They have been, they have asked us and been in conversations with city staff for the last, several times over the last year about the idea of bringing that to fruition, and so part of our was like, let's look at other options, how else can we help? We have a huge parking lot that's underutilized. So the conversation began there of like, what, what else could we do to help your, your employees, but also not be, not lose storefronts, but also help your employees have a parking space throughout the, throughout the year. So we, we essentially brought forward this idea of a reduced rate from $275 to $150 per quarter, and they thought that was great, and we would love to roll that out to any other business in downtown. And so we would like to solidify that in our fee schedule, and that's why we're having a public hearing tonight. I know there's some other questions, the mayor, you had about first quarter, last quarter for some of these businesses, and I'm happy to answer any of those, but I guess I, I might be missing something, but sorry, this is a little bit off the cuff.
No, you're doing great, Joseph. I think that the two things that I would add are, one, we're obviously also talking to you a lot about financial stability. As part of that, we will be embarking in early 2025 on a comprehensive review of the entire fee schedule. So you might be thinking, well, why are we doing this now? It is important to us that we, we provide equity across our fees. When we agreed to provide this, this reduced rate to Reliable Credit, which is within the city manager's authority of a fee reduction, we also discussed at that time wanting to provide that for all quarterly past purchasers, again, to preserve that equity. Because of an administrative hiccup, that, that didn't happen at the desk, and so what we've, this is in your staff report, what we're proposing, if you approve this tonight, is that we will do a credit. this tonight, is that we will do a credit for other quarterly past purchasers when they come next time to make good on that, you know, they getting the same rate. So the, the second piece, in addition to the kind of implementation notes, is you might be wondering, well, what is this going to do to our revenue piece? Parking permits are not a massive revenue generator for the city. I will start there. But we have been tracking this to see, um, it is, it is a significant reduction in cost. However, we saw just with that reduction for Reliable Credit, demand significantly increased and so we saw actually a revenue increase, um, from this reduction. And we estimate that that could actually bear out with other quarterly past customers as well. We do have the data, my computer's about to die, so I'm hoping Joseph has the data pulled up, uh, to the mayor, the questions that I know you wanted us to address. We also, as Joseph is showing on this map, um, and I believe we've shared with you in previous updates, we're changing some of our parking regulations downtown. So permit parking will be more, um, permit parking options will be more plentiful. Most of our public parking will become two hour or by permit. So I think that this is an opportunity to, A, match what we're giving to Reliable Credit to all businesses downtown, uh, B, continue to monitor that demand and see what it does really to those revenue numbers. And again, we're going to be looking at the fee schedule anyway, so we can always course correct if this, um, doesn't pan out. And then C, it's, I think as we open up more, more supply in terms of permit parking space, those levers to increase demand, um, will be a, may be a good thing. We also have some businesses, we heard today that Free might be hiring 25 new folks. So I have a feeling that employee parking downtown might be higher in demand anyway, coming up soon. I think that was the additional one.
So I heard you say bulk park, parking permits, but you said all parking permits. So it's, we're not just talking about people who are buying five or more or 10 or more.
No, we are talking about, it's the quarterly, it's the quarterly rate that we would be, that we have reduced for Reliable Credit that we are proposing matching, the quarterly rate.
Just quarterly, correct.
Okay. I do have questions, but I do want to also give a piece of context to this, um, to why the fees are where they are now. So in 2017, I don't know, somebody'd have to go back and pull the records, but in about 2017, and about the time we were talking about our climate action plan, um, there were counselors, specifically former counselor Angel Falconer, former mayor Mark Gamba, who were very adamant that our parking pass should not be cheaper than a TriMed pass. And so we stepped up the fee, $10 a year for like three years to get to parity with the cost of a TriMed parking pass. So I just, um, I, I just want people to know that background because this is really, I mean, I do think there's a climate aspect here that we have to be thinking about. But with that, yeah, I did want to, I did ask questions of Joseph in advance about, um, uh, how many, I mean, the increase was an increase of, you know, it was 30, uh, an increase of 33 passes, I think, from the first quarter to the last quarter. How many of those went to Reliable? How many of those went to Dark Horse?
Yeah, so, um, for Reliable Credit, in the first quarter, they had one parking permit. And then this fourth quarter, they have 14. So just, uh, but even last quarter, third quarter, they had 19. So it's, it's gone from one, three, in the second quarter, 19, 14, in the third and fourth. So, um, quite a bit more than was originally happening. And for Dark Horse, uh, they had zero in the first quarter, then it went to 14 in the second, and it's been kind of consistent until this last quarter, which is 18. So they're kind of in the 14, 18 realm.
Okay. They're our two largest.
True, right. And I also heard, um, talking to Mike Richardson earlier this year, is that they were bringing everyone back. I don't know if that's fully happened or it's been fully realized because it still seems like there's quite a few employees, not as it once was, I guess, pre-COVID. Uh, there are also a few other businesses, um, that, that utilize this permit. That's BG Reynolds Syrups, Sunshine Early Learning Center, and Things From Another World. They also, oh, and sorry, Cannabis, can be asparagus worms also buys permits. So not much. I honestly, from my perspective, I don't, uh, parking, I liked my own personal professional opinion is, I definitely want to charge for parking as high as, as a, at a premium. I think given the circumstances, it just made some sense in this moment. Uh, as, as city manager, um, Sagar said, is, this can also be readjusted as, as, as we see demand, um, go up. And I, I fully assume that it's exactly what will happen and what we'll need to start talking about, um, at a later date.
It was my understanding that the Reliable Credit employees had been parking at Moda for many years. Did they suddenly not have the access to spaces there or?
That I don't know, yeah.
I don't know the background on that, okay. Because, yeah, they were.
That's also a nice parking lot that's empty all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a little further walk for them to get from their car to work, but, um, okay. Other questions from councils?
Um, I have a question. In the data that you have, does it break down, I mean, are all these parking passes for full-time employees? Do we have anything that breaks down full-time versus part-time employees or?
I don't believe we capture any of that data through our parking permit pass. It's just if they're buying a monthly, a daily, a monthly, or a quarterly.
So if someone only works in the office or works period, part-time, then they're still buying a full month parking pass?
Yes.
Is there any mechanism that we have for, like, if a business were to purchase that parking pass, um, you know, is it a physical pass that, that they, for part-time employees, they could, you know, have it available for that, for that use? How does that work?
Yeah, that's really.
It's getting sticky?
Yeah, well, it's just, it's out of my, my bailiwick, um, and more into the enforcement and issuing sideside enough.
We, we received a public comment along those lines. It's definitely something I'd like to explore. I will be honest that for this particular conversation, I'd say the number one driver for us was resolving the current inequity of providing a discount for one business, not another. I definitely want to take a much closer look at our parking permit system writ large, particularly, um, you know, right, I, I hear you loud and clear, Mayor Beatty, about the climate impacts here. I like Joseph, love parking pricing for many reasons. I think in this case, we, you'll see, we've got some economic development, some land use risks that we were trying to weigh up with, with this piece. So long-winded way of saying, I really want to look deeper into the, both the administrative and the enforcement sides of that idea, but I think it really is a smart one and one that we could definitely pursue.
Okay, that's good to hear. I mean, I, I agree with the climate impacts and I also know that as we apply an equity lens, um, you know, for businesses, we should also be applying an equity lens for people who are working in the businesses. And, um, and often people who are working part-time don't have benefits or they don't, you know, they're not, they're not qualifying for benefits or things along those lines. So anyway, I really, I appreciate you looking into it a little bit more.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, could you confirm that, uh, the owner of Reliable Credit has a window to demolish these stores?
Yes.
And it runs for another year and a half, two years?
Uh, roughly a year.
Roughly a year?
Yeah.
September 2025, I believe.
Yeah, that's it.
So, um, did this, this, uh, reduction in parking prices, did that, do we get, do we have some assurance that that will not happen?
Uh, the assurance is, we got to get to that date because, I mean, they haven't given us any assurance that that's not an option. They don't want, I don't think they want to do that. I think they don't want to have to go through construction if I'm, my conversations, reading the room. But it's still, it's still a card they can play, right? It's still, I don't think they want to give that away. So that's, I don't know, that's about as much as I can give as far as assurance.
Yeah, I just didn't, you know, I, I think I understand what happened, but, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if there's any, um, uh, assurances that, you know, things that we don't want to see happen could still happen.
Yeah.
And so I, I, you know, uh, it sounds like we made a concession, but I'm not sure we, did we get a concession back?
Yeah, I hear you, council president. I think in this case, it was, they have their leverage. They have that 10-year entitlement and, um, when we were approached, it was, the option presented in front of us was find a way to make a deal or we may, we may activate this. So I, I hear you, but the honest answer is we don't have a.
We don't have assurance. The only thing that I can maybe, that maybe helps in this case is that the whole reason they wanted to find a solution here is so they wouldn't have to think about that. That's, that's one of the reasons why these conversations started in the, in the first place, so. Okay, yeah, I agree in a soul, I guess.
I, I, I hope that we have good results here.
Counselor Coasterbody?
Uh, yeah, firstly, that was a terrible, awful deal. I don't know what that, what went into that deal or why would you give any individual business the right to bulldoze? Anyways, um, but yeah, I was a little bit concerned with, had the same concern, council president, is, you know, are they going to try to use this as leverage for something else to get out of us before September? You know, like, are they going to try to bully pulpit and say, well, we're, you know what I mean? And how do, like, we have no recourse on our end in case they do try to strong arm us and for anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
If I'm reading it right?
Yeah. It's private property. It's their, their rights are.
Right, yeah, I mean, but it was a deal made with the city. The city allowed that, that's the, that's the, I mean, that's.
Well, the city allowed it to keep it, the teardown from happening then. The city gave them a grandfather, because there was a code change going on then. And they were going to do it before the code change unless they got this sort of grant, this sort of extended right. So it would have happened back then.
I mean, we, we're, we're here now, so the only thing we can do is that we have no assurances from them, but I, I don't mind, you know, making it across the board. I actually wouldn't mind even offering, um, permits to the residents there because we do have people that's, that work from home. Maybe this is another conversation.
Well, this is, we're getting into deliberation, I think. We need to keep this to questions and clarifications.
Yeah, we're in a public hearing.
We'll get to deliberation. We'll get to deliberation.
I mean, that's, that, there's this follow-up question of council president, I guess, just kind of sucks we don't have any leverage here.
Um, councillor Anderson, I see your hand is raised.
Maybe I just save this for later when we hop into deliberation, but I will say, um, I, I hear our concerns about the climate impacts of making it easier to park in downtown Milwaukee. And I, I do, I think we have to balance that with the desire to have a really strong, thriving downtown and a culture where our businesses feel like we're listening to them and following through. And I think we're describing today a important give and take. I think we're doing a lot of giving here. That's important. We're going to have some tough conversations about parking in the future and I think this is an important thing to remember, kind of get some good graces on. I don't want to have our city and our downtown continue to rely on a lot of parking, on people to be taking TriMed and people to be getting around and even living downtown and working downtown. I think this is a good temporary measure and I appreciate the work that you all have put into it. So, uh, for the sake of saying all that, I'll throw it out there.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, if no one else has clarifying questions of Joseph, I will say, we got one piece of correspondence.
Yep, and that was the one I alluded to. It was from Kelly Keener. It was suggesting that we also look at split parking permits and, um, we, we aren't proposing, implementing anything within this proposal tonight, but I, I would like to take a look at that, um, as part of further fee schedule considerations, yeah.
Does anyone, we, we got no other, I mean, that's my question. We didn't receive any additional correspondence on the topic.
We did not.
Okay. Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed fee schedule revisions? Not seeing anyone in the room. Mr. Stoffer said there's no one online, so I won't read that, um, I won't read that script. Uh, any last questions for staff before we go into deliberations? Okay, if no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the fee schedule revisions hearing.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the fee schedule revisions hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. None heard, the public comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there counsel discussion? So I guess I will say, I'm hearing a fair amount of support for this. I'm really torn about this. I think, um, torn about it on a few levels. One is the climate impact and the sort of backtracking away from making it easier for people to drive than to take transit. One, and part of what, one, but balancing that out with, it's in the interests of our downtown businesses to get employees back at work at Dark Horse and at some of these other places. It's good for, you know, it helps all the businesses downtown if employees are coming into downtown. So, I mean, there's, there's a definite tension there. I guess, um, what also troubles me though is, I mean, we say we're going to revisit all of our fees as part of our, but if, this is a huge cut. If this had been a $50 cut or something, I would have, I would have less angst about it, but this is a huge cut. It's cutting it in half. It's, so then raising it back by that much is going to create an outcry, first off. It's also, we're going to have a conversation in January or February about the future of the Main and Harrison lot. And say suddenly we get at this uptick and we get everybody, and we, and we have heard from renters too, who would like to have the opportunity to buy parking passes, right? Who only have one space in their unit and, you know, have more than one car and would like to have an opportunity to buy parking passes. If, but we're going to have a conversation about the future of the Main and Harrison lot. If we suddenly, you know, have, are enticing more and more people to drive and to bring cars downtown, and then we take that lot away to construct something there, which we will at some point, I don't know how soon, but we will at some point, then we're going to have, we're going to displace people, we're going to have kind of invited more, uh, upset and more displacement and more anger than we would have at the current levels of selling parking passes that we have. So I really, I, I, yeah, like I said, I'm very torn about the whole thing. Yeah.
I, I, I just feel like because of what that deal says, we're kind of screwed, um, regardless, um, not saying that they would do that, but I mean, I don't want to play with someone else's fire.
Well, I mean, that begs the question to me, do we, I mean, do we have to treat all downtown businesses the same? Somebody does have us over a barrel. That doesn't mean we have to treat everybody the same.
Right, but we, I mean, considering where we're at now, revenue-wise, if, I mean, not saying that this is going to solve the problem, but we have seen an increase. You know, that there's, it's a double-edged sword if, if you think about it, but, um, how much of an impact are we taking these, these reduced fees are going to make in terms of more cars downtown, more coarse parking, more, you know, emissions? I mean, really, it's the people that are getting to work, it's employee parking permits. People got to get to work. You know, we're, we're not, we're not really talking about the residents right now, we're just talking about, you know, employees. So it's, again, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword because on one hand, you want to protect environment, but then you also got to help people get to work and make it easy on them to get to work and where they don't have to worry about an $80 ticket going to work because 10 bucks an hour, eight-hour shift, there's your whole days of work in one ticket. So it's a balance and I just think with where we're at right now, this is, this is a, this makes sense. We're getting a little bit of revenue out of it. We're also, we're also helping across the board, employees get to work, making it easier on them, making it cheaper on the employees. Because again, we talk about goals and affordability, this is a way to make it cheaper for people that live and work in Milwaukee. I mean, we can't have our cake and eat it too, all the time. And this is one of those things that what's, what's the, what's the, what's, what's, what outweighs, you know, the other? And I, I think doing it across the board outweighs the.
Just to be clear, that revenue it's generating is pretty darn minimal. Because when you cut, so we had 17 sold at the old, we had actually. Because when you cut, so we had 17 sold at the old, we had actually 32 sold at the old rate. And we have 50 sold now, but if we're only going to make half as much, we're not actually generating more revenue.
We did look at the revenue, it, it is an increase. Um, it's, but you're, you're, this is not the main revenue generator. I mean, I think, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, guys, I think it was like we went from $11,000 to $13,000. Not significant numbers, but, but I, I, we did track that because I did want to see with this. It, I completely hear you, Mayor. It's a significant cut. I want you to know I was torn too, and that's why we wanted to bring it as a policy conversation. Um, but it is that, I don't believe we put the revenue line in your staff report, but it is a increase. We're ending the year making more per quarter than we were previously.
If, if I, if I can, maybe it's helpful. I, I appreciate a, a number of things. Obviously the, the climate consideration, um, the idea that, yeah, maybe it's not, not one, or not, not for everyone, maybe it is just to the specific issue. I appreciate that as well. Here's where I think a part of our discussion was, and maybe it's helpful for, for you all to die us, and that is, um, in working with this one business who does have some sign, has a land use entitlement that is pretty significant impact downtown, is I, I would have a difficult time if they did end up doing that and those businesses came to me and said, was there something that you could have done? And did you do that? And I, my answer was, no, sorry. I, that was difficult for me, and I think it was also challenging for all of us on like, I don't want to live in that, can we take the, the chance here? I don't even know if it's a chance, I just like, just working, working it out and trying to figure out a, a solution that works for everyone and, and get away from that whole potential. So that's, I don't know, it's more, more context to the conversations we've had, but.
Other thoughts? I mean, I, I don't think anybody should think about it from a revenue standpoint. I think the amount of revenue is negligible. It is the bringing people downtown, you know, getting more people back to work if there's still people not working. Now, one of the other users, as I remember, of the parking pass was the business that used to be above Key Bank. Um, but I think that's, business has moved out of town and that space is for rent. So, um, I don't know, other than Dark Horse, is there anybody else who doesn't have employees coming into the office? You know, but I do think, you know, there's that aspect of enlivening downtown by making it, you know, bringing more employees back. Um, and then the affordability issue for individuals. To me, those are the benefits of going, you know, doing an across-the-board, uh, reduction. Personally, I still see a lot of downsides and I'd be inclined to just do it for reliable, to be honest.
Sure. Um, but I just, I don't, I don't quite understand if the number of parking passes that are purchased, are they, it's just a number that we give to a business, right? The, the name of the person using the pass doesn't come back to us? Or is it assigned to a specific?
I think it's assigned to a vehicle. Isn't it assigned to a, a license plate number? Yeah, that's my understanding.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is maybe the, um, longevity of use. If there's some scheduling, you know, like maybe if you've had a pass for a certain number of years, then it starts kind of going down in price or something like that. But I don't know if administratively that's just too complicated to keep track of.
I just want to give credit to your fellow, your counselor to your left, who mentioned that exact idea to me earlier today as well. Um, I think that's the type of thing we could explore in a.
Yeah.
You don't remember? That's the second time today I've given you a compliment and you just, yeah. Um, but no, I, 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 I think, I think there's a lot we could do in parking design. Um, and a lot we're going to need to do in parking design as the landscape in our downtown parking changes in all the ways the mayor talked about, both business growth, but also potential land redevelopment. And I take your point, Mayor, that you take something away, it's hard to take, to put it back always sometimes. So, um, I, I'm sorry to keep saying yes and yes, um, but I, I, I think there is some real opportunities for some innovation, for rewarding, you know, long-term businesses. Um, again, our current proposal isn't that nuanced, it's just the matching.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Um, I mean, the alternative could be getting to a little bit more of what Counselor Anderson was talking about too. If there's, if there are incentives that the business is taking advantage of and employees are, you know, they maybe have a parking pass, but they also bike or walk or take the bus to work a certain number of days a week or something like that. There could be a, a cheaper pass involved there, we could incentivize that. I understand that that's also on the, you know, on the burner for a longer conversation, but, um, I guess.
I mean, there are daily passes, right? Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess I was kind of thinking about, um, you know, how we might be able to, um.
Incentivize act, like active transportation and/or transit use? Like if someone had a transit pass and they came and said, I have a transit pass, can I get a reduced?
Well, I guess, I guess I'll stop.
I guess that's, I'm tracking, I think I'm tracking with you.
I think that, I mean, if I go any further with this, it's going to spin us out into a lot of different directions and I don't want to do that. So, um, so I think this is a, it's a, um, it's a difficult situation. I see that staff have grappled with this as well, and I think that, um, your recommendation is, is worthy of, um, our adoption. So I'll save the rest of my comments for a future discussion on, um, on parking downtown.
Okay, Counselor Anderson, I thought you dropped off for a minute there, um, but go right ahead.
We had a little Wi-Fi cut. Um, I would tend to agree with what Counselor Severnord was saying. Like I think, I think there's a larger conversation about parking downtown. And a lot of the times, um, just abstract even more, as we think about these public policy decisions, I think often about, is the juice worth a squeeze? And I think that there are some real hard conversations that we need to have about parking downtown. You mentioned the Harrison lot. I think when we develop that lot, um, and, uh, more housing to bring more people downtown, create more affordable options in Milwaukee, like, that will put a strain on parking in the city. And I think it's important that we stand true to our climate commitments in those moments. I don't see this as the hill to die on. Um, I think this, this is an opportunity to gain good grace for the business community and show that we're responsive. And I, I, I don't believe that this is going to meaningfully change the number of people who are walking, biking, taking transit to downtown. I think that there are other things later on down the road that will change that honestly more. I'd rather us put our political capital into those investments than, uh, picking if I put this one here. So I, I think it is a really tough choice, um, but I would tend to lean on the side of adopting the staff recommendation.
Other comments?
Uh, just, just the last one. Uh, you know, we, we also just took a tour of New City, well, New Old City Hall, where, you know, you got Dream and these other Keeper Coffee and, and, you know, those employees are going to need parking passes and, and usually, you know, I, I, I would, and this is an assumption, uh, based on reliable credit, and I don't really know exactly what they do, but I would assume that they probably play, pay their employees a little bit higher than, let's say, Windhorse or, or a barista might make in downtown. So with more jobs coming in and more people needing more places to park, that's another reason I, I, I would support making it across the board for the businesses.
Yeah, I do wish we were having this conversation after we'd had the conversation about the Maine Harrison lot, because I think this conversation could be informed by that conversation. Um, I do think the employees of the Old City Hall, the customers of the, at the Old City Hall, the cus, employees and customers of the new food cart pod going in next door, we are going to have demand for parking. We are going to have demand for parking, um, whether we lower the rates or not, and some of that's, you know, two, two-hour parking will suffice and some of it, it won't. Um, I do think we are making it harder on ourselves when it comes time to redevelop that lot. I do think we are creating a much harder conversation, uh, the more we, um, incentivize parking in that lot, but, um, I won't belabor that point. All right, if nobody else has a, any comments, I will, uh, oh, yeah. Is counsel ready to vote? I guess that's the question on my script.
I move to approve the resolution revising section four of the fee schedule for downtown parking.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution revising schedule four of the fee schedule for downtown parking. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no? No. Uh, so I believe it passed four to one. Uh, yeah, we don't have to poll the, poll the council. Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, we are at, um, at council reports? I thought we had something else. Oh, goal setting. Oh, quarterly, oh, got it, got it, okay. Um, yeah, Scott's supposed to talk to us about our council budgets, and I'm kind of wondering why we don't just do this in one-on-one and why we're doing it in the public meeting? Uh, but anyway, um, go ahead, Scott.
There was a really good reason for us to do it in a public meeting. And if somebody'd written it down, that'd be great.
I, I actually, I, I do, we, we, we brought this up, I think it was towards the end of the biennium where it was like, oh, we, we were talking about lobbying budget for the next biennium, and it was like, I wish we, we talked more about our council budget so we could all keep our eyes on it. And that led to, let's put it on a quarterly update. We can absolutely revisit that, we can do an annual check-in, we can do meet, like, your point very well taken.
Yeah, okay.
A fewer times my name is on agenda, that is great though. Uh, so very, very, very quickly, uh, council members have budgets, it's $6,000 per fiscal year, the mayor has $10,000 per fiscal year for an education and training budget. Uh, typical use of those is going to conferences and, and local events and things like that. And to date, some money has been spent. Uh, the mayor went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, but by and large, uh, the emails that I think I sent you maybe a month ago hasn't changed much. Um, and then just the big reminder I was going to bring up is there is that, um, $10,000 set aside per fiscal year, uh, for lobbying, and that has not really been defined to this point. So not necessarily looking for a council answer on that, just an opportunity to remind you of that and to talk any questions you might have about your individual budgets or the council budget in general.
Well, as I recall, there were some questions about how, what, what is appropriate for people to spend that individual budgets on? Like, um, I mean, yes, conferences, training obviously encompass, but some people wanted to spend them on going to a dinner or going, you know, supporting some group's effort, some nonprofit group or whatever. Um, have we, are there questions about that that we need some clearance, clarity on for people?
It's a great question, Mayor. I've heard also about mailers, you know, if a council want, council wanted to send out a mailer once a year of, here's what I, here's what are my priorities and like that. The, the answer I've given to everyone is there is no current guidance, there's no policy we've been able to find, no, nothing written up. I, I feel that enough of these questions now that I'm, I'm inclined to maybe ask, uh, Michael to put something on paper and bring that back to this group to, to discuss. Again, I don't want it to be overly onerous, and I love that we do have council members now who have innovative and interesting ideas, and so I don't want to preclude that, but I think, I, I hate giving wishy-washy advice when you ask me what can I spend that, that budget on, but, but would love to hear back from you if that kind of written guidelines would be helpful.
I think having the conversation around that would be helpful. Yeah, so having, having something written as a place to start and have that conversation.
Great, we can bring that back.
Yeah. And on the lobbying, I do think, I'm kind of looking at Joseph here, but I do think we may need some lobbying money on the dam in the, in the new year. Um, because there's going to be a lot of, you know, effort trying to put together the funding for the dam. Um, Neil Schulman is in DC right now, actually, meeting with some people. Um, but, uh, I, I think, you know, we may have a use for that $10,000. Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, I, so I think, I mean, my suggestion was to have a larger conversation about a legislative, um, agenda and a lobbying fund. Um, and that's because I think that it's better to have those guidelines very clear on the front end than it is to get down the road and then say, hey, why did we lobby on this and not on this? Um, the only guideline that we have honestly at this point is what the council goals are, in my mind, and then we have certain projects like the dam that are priority projects that we're involved in, we're active in, but they're not council goals. And so I think then, I, I think then it does need, we do need to have guidance that gives us, you know, um, a clear place to have the discussion at least around what our legislative priorities are for the year, and I think it really should be the year, not the biennium. Um, because, you know, the short session is very different than the long session, we're having, you know, big, big changes at the federal level. We don't have enough money to have, um, you know, federal lobbyists. Um, we might have enough money to maybe call one, um, but we don't have enough per contract. So, um, but I, I think that other cities are probably struggling with this as well, and so if we are interested in lobbying on a federal level around metro-wide or, you know, or region-wide, um, priorities, maybe we can do some like economy of scale. So I don't know if that is something that the city manager's office can put together and/or the budget director's office, but I think that would be helpful, starting point to have a discussion.
Sure. That meaning a legislative agenda?
No, that meaning, um, guidance around the development of a, of a lobbying, uh, that being the development of guidance to, um, spend a lobbying budget.
Mm-hmm, okay. I mean, I do think where you started, talking about our need for a legislative agenda, I, I would agree with. You know, we, we had some amount, well, we really didn't have conversation much because we voted by email to the city manager in terms of LOC's lobbying priorities. Um, but that list of lobbying priorities, you know, that's a starting point, I'm sure there are other things. Um, but there is City Day at the Capitol on January 28th, and it is our, our opportunity to go, go lobby ourselves. Um, and maybe we do need to have a conversation about a legislative agenda.
I, I mean, that was something that I'd been asking for, um, I think since being sworn in.
Yeah.
Because I think that making sure that we are coordinating our message in all of our lobbying conversations is really key. If we go, if we all go to City Day, and we should, um, and we have conversations with legislators about the things that either come to mind for us in the moment, or we have 30 seconds of airtime and we can get, you know, something in, or something that's really true and, and, you know, dear to our heart, and that's what we want to spend our time lobbying on, but that legislator hears five conflicting priorities from the city of Milwaukee, that's confusing for the legislator. And then the likelihood of us not getting any of those priorities funded or met or, you know, I mean, that, we run that risk. So I do think that we need to have a, a conversation about legislative agenda, and then we have to have very clear guidelines around how we use our legislative funding. Those, those are the two pieces.
So couple, couple notes, points all very well taken, and I do think we had a, back when we were talking policy lanes, I think we tried to smoosh it in there and we ran out of time, and so I own that, that we, that this is a refrain. I've heard a lot from, from many counselors, it came out on our last retreat, and I'm sorry that we haven't really carved out the time for it. Knowing there's City Day, I mean, the, the second place my, my brain went was we could definitely build this into your retreat, but your retreat will be after City Day. So I'm having Scott look at our forecaster because I thought we had slotted something in, in one of the January meetings to talk about legislative tracking, um.
The, the return of council legislative and regional issues starts in January. So it's on every regular session agenda beginning in January 7th.
Okay, so we can work on, we can have some internal conversations and work on putting time on January agendas for more concerted legislative priority discussions in addition to than the, the guidance of sort of how to, to, how you could allocate your budgeted lobbying funds.
Just one comment, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the time that you have allocated for that has typically been a status report, right? So we haven't given more than five or 10 minutes to it, and I think that this is going to take.
It would be an expansion. I think those meetings have a little bit of breathing room. Yeah, oh, and the only other thing I was going to say is that the, even if we don't have a legislative agenda for this year, maybe we could work together on a document that develops talking points. Because I know if I'm, if I'm presented with an elevator trip worth of time, I'm going to advocate for the thing that I work closely on in, in the city. And, you know, I'll try, I'll try my best to get the council goals in there and get, get key projects. But if we don't have a conversation amongst ourselves about how to use that, you know, 30 seconds of elevator time, then I think we're, it's just wasted opportunity. And, and I know that if there are particular talking points on the dam that I have, then I'll do a better job of representing that in, in brief conversations that I have versus the things that I work on more regularly.
Counselor Anderson?
I will say, I, I just would appreciate some clarity on what specifically we are asking for, especially if it's the dam. If we make a vague ask for funds for the dam, nothing will come of it. But if we have a specific ask that we can elevate to the four legislators who represent portions of Milwaukee, I think that that's much more impactful. So if that is a component of our discussion in January, I think that that's timely, especially considering how quick a long session can move in some ways.
Do we have four legislators who represent portions of Milwaukee? Or we only had? I thought we only had one senator and one rep.
We've got two senators and two reps. Anything that is east of Linwood is represented by Rep.-elect April Dobson and Senator Meek. Anything west of Linwood, and granted, that's most of the city, is represented by Representative Mark Gamba and Senator Kathleen Taylor.
Okay, I didn't realize that, okay. Okay, well, we, yeah, I do agree that we need to have a, I mean, we have some starting points, you know. We have LOC's lists, we have, I can share the Milwaukee, I mean, the Metro Mayor's Consortium's list. And that can give people some places to start thinking about, you know, what's important. And Counselor Anderson, I think, always has had a lot of insight into the legislature, but probably has even more now in his new role. So we can lean on him to.
Consider it forecasted.
Okay, um, so I'm sorry, we kind of cut into your budget. Was, are you, are you done with the budget? Okay, okay. Council goal setting, Emma.
Good evening, Council. I know we're tired, I know it's the end of the meeting. I'll try to do this quick, but this is a follow-up from the mini-retreat we held back in mid-November. I want to quickly recap some of the outcomes that came out of that related to your council goals. And then my objective for tonight is to pin down the list of goal ideas that we are going to move forward for some public outreach and feedback. So when we met back on November 12th, you agreed, I believe, to a few things. You get to tell me if I got any of this wrong. You agreed to identify up to three new goals that would start in 2025. And we will be gathering feedback on those to, to identify the top three via an Engage Milwaukee survey, open middle of this month through middle of next month, and a town hall, an in-person town hall in January. I will talk more about that at the end of my presentation. We agreed that our goals this time around, we're going to aim to make them a little more specific with some clear deliverables for both council and staff. And those deliverables, we want them to be achievable within the timeframe of the goal. We also agreed to a few kind of process updates around goals. We want to develop performance metrics at the time of adoption, so we know how we're going to measure success, as well as creating a template for consistent tracking of progress along the goal. And we agreed that we wanted to get on a better alignment between our goal timeline and our budget process. What we didn't land on, and I'd like to explore further at our full retreat in January, is whether that means some goals are one-year and then we're setting another two-year goal to line up with budget, or whether we're setting goals for three years. I don't think we need to solve that tonight. I think that's something we can wrestle with at the retreat. But just naming that, I, I think I heard consensus, yeah, it's better to line them up. We just don't know exactly how we're going to do that yet. Does anyone have issues with what I'm summarizing on this page? Okay. I'm not going to read this to you, but just a reminder, and if anyone's watching at home, we talked about how all of our goals, we want to be imbued with the values of our organization. You see the five values that we've adopted in our Milwaukee Momentum Strategic Plan. And then these also speak to two of our current goals that I think are being institutionalized as values in the organization, equity, as well as climate or sustainability that you see there highlighted in green. So these are questions that we could ask of whatever goal you choose to prioritize as you design it and define what it means for council. Okay, so the next two slides, I had to break it over two slides because it was so much text. But I'm going to go through these line by line to share what I did with, this is the list I showed you last time with some refinements. I heard a few great pieces of feedback when we met last time. First was, you wanted at least kind of three deliverable ideas per goal. So we could really start illustrating to yourselves, but also to the public, what this actually could look like. Gives people something to chew on. Doesn't mean everything on those bullet lists is what we're going to do, but it's a, it's an example, an illustrative example of what you might advance. The second piece of feedback I really took was, you know, in this vein of making our goals a bit more specific, trying to frame them around outcomes we want to see achieved. What could we actually see look different in that one-to-three-year timeframe? So you, I've tried to frame these more as, as those outcomes. So the first one is promoting economic development across the city. Examples of what we could accomplish under that goal would be code changes to remove barriers to economic development, a robust neighborhood hub marketing strategy, a small business incubator and training program, and a strategy focused around our industrial areas. That's not exhaustive, nor does that mean we do everything on that list, just some ideas. Goal idea two, improve transportation safety on Milwaukee streets. Some deliverables could be a citywide Greenway investment plan, could be a speed or red light camera program, could be various revenue strategies that continue to fund safety work. And it could be, some things I've heard a few counselors share with me is, you know, what can we be doing on the pedestrian crossings across McLaughlin and 224 to make those safer? Whether it's flags or, or flashing beacons, those kinds of things. Enhance community affordability. We had a lot of talk on this one at the last meeting. Thank you to Counselor Crossrobody for, in follow-up conversations with me, really helping crystallize what these specific deliverables could look like. So that could be getting the Sparrow Site built out with affordable housing. It could be developing a land banking strategy for further affordable housing development. It could be looking at our fees and our utility bills and looking at ways we could do innovative rebate programs, like a tree bait or revamped water use reduction rebate program. Could be using CET affordable housing funds, set up a down payment assistance program. The next one, ensure ability to develop priority park projects. This could look like completing Milwaukee Bay Park, creating an asset replacement and funding strategy, identifying revenue strategies that could support parks. And there's a lot to unpack in that statement, and we can go down those weeds if you want now. And coming up with a decision RE, the city's relationship with NCPRD. Next is developing a strategy for proactive land annexation. This could look like a clarified understanding of what's in our toolbox for annexation, negotiations related to our urban growth management area, advocacy at the state and regional level for greater authority. Not for great annexation authority, sorry, greater annexation authority. And, or, and some marketing collateral to encourage properties who are capable, who are able to annex to voluntarily do so. Continuing on, improving community preparedness for emergencies. This could look like more drills and tabletop exercises with CERT, more community education and outreach, or maybe an undergrounding strategy for our power lines. Helping Milwaukians most in need, this could look like increasing our partnership with Clackamas County's Health, Housing and Human Services teams, increasing the shelter bed capacity in Milwaukee through those partnerships, and increasing the amount of in-house behavioral health support we're able to provide. And then these two, these last two were ones that I added to the list you saw last time, per some feedback at the last conversation. I think you heard me say, you know, we are going to be working on financial stability no matter what. And we are going to be working on water infrastructure no matter what. But I heard that they are such big bodies of work that considering prioritizing them as a council goal and putting even more resources is something you'd like to consider. So under financial stability, you know, obviously that could look like new revenue streams, but it could also mean even more robust polling on revenue ideas, a comprehensive forecast of needs for the city, and updating our financial policies. And then on the water infrastructure side, you know, we already have in our CIP some planned investments, but we could look at additional grant pursuits to augment those CIP dollars. We could look at even further investments that protect our groundwater. And we could look at, you know, a more comprehensive strategy around water quality. That was so many words. I am going to go to the next slide, which is just, just the headlines, but I can flip back if you'd like. My two questions for you tonight are, are there additional edits you'd like to see me make to how these goals are presented or any of the examples I've shared tonight? And are there any missing? We have nine here. Are there any that you don't see in those nine that you'd want to make sure we add to the list before we share this out with, with the public? Again, we're not narrowing down tonight, we're not, we're not picking. That happens in January and February. But just, are you comfortable with this as the list we go live with?
You want to start to my left, Council President?
It's a long list. I, I guess my only concerns is if we take this to, you know, the residents. It's a long list of nine things. I'm, you know, I'm not sure what's going to happen. I mean, I, you know, is, each one of them get a 10% of the vote? I mean, I, you know, they, they can kind of all look, you know. It's late, I'm not making any sense. I'll shut up.
You know, my favorite trick, I hear you, Council President. My favorite trick for that is I don't let people vote, I make people rank, because then we get some waiting.
I like that. I was going to say, I don't want it to be, you know, you're voting for which ones we pick. It's your, you know, you're telling us which ones are important to you and why, and, you know, and inviting others if there are others out there.
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm dialing back. You know, to, to the point that you made is that, you know, we're going to work on water regardless. So why would we even have it on the list?
Well, I think I'm the one who brought that one up, and I brought it up from the vantage point of there is money out there at the federal government and the state government for some of that. And that we can reduce the impacts on our ratepayers by capitalizing that. And sort of, you know, we've had a, just sort of bits and pieces of a discussion about, you know, grant, grants and staff capacity and grant seeking and, you know.
So you're concerned that that wouldn't be addressed if it wasn't a goal?
Yes. I'm concerned that we don't have the capacity to go out, seek and manage those grants if it's not a goal. Yeah. Actually, Counselor Anderson has his hand up and he was normally on this side, so we'll let him go next.
Well, I was going to say, to your point, and then I'm happy to hop whoever it goes. I do think some of these could overlap or could blend. Like, I think, I, I think, I'm kind of confused if we're submitting the bullet points to people on Engage Milwaukee because I think an important bullet point under economic development should be something about Milwaukee Bay Park. I mean, that's something that I've heard in talking to multiple businesses downtown, that the best way that we can do economic development downtown is building Milwaukee Bay Park. And I think about water infrastructure. The governor's housing bill, or governor's proposed budget that she released, $100 million set aside for sewer infrastructure projects for the purposes of building more housing. If water infrastructure and those grants can be achieved through a focus on affordable housing, could those not be doubled up there as well? And so I guess part of me, I, I would agree with Council President Massey. The things that we can call from this list before sending it out, the extent possible, I think is valuable, frankly. I, I might have been the one to bring up annexation, I liked it a lot. I don't think now is the time, I'm happy to leave it. I don't know if preparedness for emergencies is necessarily something we need either. Happy to be wrong, but if there are any of them that we could maybe collapse into each other or remove outright, I think that that might be helpful. I have some other comments too, but I just wanted to say that to your conversation.
Oh, go ahead with the rest of your comments.
Oh, boy, okay. The other thing that I would say, if you could go back to the bullet points. One of the things that I just want to kind of understand is some of these bullet points are a commitment to policies that I don't know if we know are, move the needle the most, if that makes sense. I'll take like, let's look at neighborhood hubs, I'll pick on myself. Neighborhood hubs' marketing strategy might not be the most impactful way that we create hubs in the city. And so is there a, do we change the bullet point to be more abstract? Or is we commit to things, like, if we look at land banking strategy for affordable housing? I love land banking, I think a lot of us do. I think there's also an open-ended question, is our goal to reduce the cost of housing in Milwaukee or is it to create a land banking program? The land banking program might lead itself to affordable housing in Milwaukee, and it might be the most impactful way. But I don't know if we know that yet, and I don't know if we've done that digging. And so I think part of my question about how we roll out these goals is, if we take a really lofty goal, how do we give ourselves the time to fill in what that looks like? And I, I've been thinking a lot, I, I really do, I know we're not talking about picking goals here, but I really do think some goal focusing on affordability, especially affordability around housing, is really valuable. And I sent out a document that talks a little bit about what some other policymakers are thinking about, how you do affordability as a goal. I think that there are some conversations that we can have. I think a lot of this is, like, we still need to bake more as policymakers if we decide to go that direction. And so the question almost, to abstract out, is how do we bake in that uncertainty when we're giving those deliverables? And at what point do we have to be certain? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Will. So a couple of thoughts that I would, that you probably can't, that I haven't conveyed on this slide is, on the Engage page and in the town hall, I would be very clear, now, some people just skim over things, but saying, these are not guaranteed items, these are illustrative of what could be done. And I think, I'm going to skip ahead really fast, the three questions, I'm trying to keep it pretty simple for the public. The three questions I think you should ask are, how'd you, how would you rank these or rank your top three? Within those, what would you like to see the city accomplish? Because then we can say, we've given you some ideas, but those aren't baked. And we're going to be doing the work to figure out what is most impactful. But tell us from your side, what would you like to see? If we were prioritizing economic development, what does that look like to you? And then three, is there any?
And then three, is there anything completely not on the list that you would like to add? So I think, Will, I take your point totally, and, and if there was anything on those examples that does give you heartburn, please let me know. But I would, I would work hard to caveat through all of the public conversation that you're not, if you get one of these, you get all those bullets, and you get them exactly as they say. Because that would be disingenuous, I think, of where you are in the process. That's the work you're going to really, we're going to roll up our sleeves and do at the retreat.
Okay. No, that's super helpful. That addresses the second point. I would, I'll harken back to Council President Massey's point. Are there any of these that folks are okay to remove? Is annexation something that we need? Would folks be okay with that? I'm totally fine if not. If we want to send the list of nine, I think that's fine. But I think it's valuable to at least ask the question.
I actually, I mean, I could see striking the water one. I think it's worth asking. The annexation one, well, I mean, I think it's important for us to be thinking about it. So if we don't put it on here, I think we're, I think that, you know, we're taking it off as a possibility. So, I also, it will tell you, I've had two people in the last few months ask me about annexation as a way to fund parks, as a way to do different things. I mean, there are people thinking about annexation, especially people on the eastern edge of Milwaukee. So, I would not want to take that one off the list.
Okay, I like it, Mayor Beatty. I was worried no one would care about annexation. I love annexation. But if there are things that people would want to remove, that sounds good. Water infrastructure, is there, would people want to remove, or community preparedness? Or is that something people would want to maintain?
Yeah, I want to maintain that one.
Yeah, I think I would maintain it as well. Along the same lines before is that, you know, we're going to be working on financial stability. It kind of, you know, it's kind of a linchpin of everything, but I don't know that it is necessarily a goal. I mean, we're going to be working on financial stability and trying to identify new revenue sources regardless of, you know, whether it's a goal or not. I mean, do you think that, that?
I think it's going to be the single thing we need to spend the most amount of time on, of everything on this list. I think in the next 18 months, it is the single thing we're going to need, us and staff. I mean, I just think it's, it's a big lift, and to not treat it as goal-level work is, is not recognizing what a lift it is going to be.
I just think it's going to happen regardless. Because there's a lot of, we spent a lot of time on this dice, we spent a lot of time talking, it's all really valuable, but we don't spend that much time talking about goals. Do we? Feel like we have.
We should be.
Oh, I don't. Tell me if I'm wrong.
We get quarterly reports on them.
Yeah, quarterly, that's, you know.
Counselor Savage George has had her, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, I'll wait.
Yeah, let's let Counselor Savage George go, and then.
Well, I just wanted to say that I started out thinking we should narrow this list down. But then I was thinking that there are some of these areas that might make sense to put in our legislative agenda. There are some of these areas that might make sense to stake claim in, even if they don't get prioritized as one of the up to three goals. But it, it would give us, you know, a general temperature in our community about how important these things are to people who are participating. And I think that's good for, it's a good check for us to have. Because we might have something that we think is a huge priority, but if we're not doing the outreach to have a conversation with people in our community about that particular issue, then we don't know if it's, it's a shared priority. So, I, I appreciate, Emma, that you were already a couple of steps ahead in thinking about the questions and how you would phrase them on Engage Milwaukee. So the thing that is in my mind now is that we should put the whole list out there, but we should have a really robust outreach effort that is beyond just Engage Milwaukee. And it's fine if you want to, you know, filter folks to that platform, but I think that people have had barriers to using that platform in the past, and might want to, you know, engage in other ways. So, I, I think, you know, for me, I guess that it brings up, you know, whether a constituent coffee should be a good idea, you know, to get people talking about some of these ideas too. And then, you know, if, if I did that, then I would bring that back in my council report and kind of, you know, share that qualitative information as we look at the quantitative. Thanks.
I, I do like having the option. I feel like, actually, this is smaller from our list two years ago. When we did our retreat, we, I feel like there was a sticky note all across the whiteboard, you know, three goals in each, each row. So I, you know, to, to, to the point that Counselor Savage George made, it does give us, you know, gauge where we're at. But I, I'd also like to, like us to, to look at the ones that we've already done. We've done a lot of polls on what we feel, or what we're asking the community, what does the city need to focus on? We've had a few different consultants come and show us the results of those. We had a live poll when we had a joint session with the Equity Steering Committee. There is a lot, I'm not saying we reduce it, obviously, we want to put this out there too, but I would also hope that we go back on the previous polls that we've looked at. Because there's probably some stuff on there that's not being captured here, that could be a goal that we're not considering, that's very important.
Great point.
You know, so I, I do want to, I don't want to just dismiss the data that we already have as well, as this new data. Because, you know, you're only going to get so many voices, and we have voices from the ESG, you know, that's a pretty, ESC, excuse me, that's a pretty big one, you know, that we, we say, we listen to quite often. So, I, I like these. I think it will help us gauge a little bit more, but again, let's also rely on the data that we have as well.
Great point, Counselor, and we can make sure that that community survey data and the, yeah, the outcomes of that joint conversation with the ESC prioritizing kind of outcomes within our vision statement, that all is brought into the retreat conversation in addition to the feedback we get through Engage.
So I have a few comments on specific wording, but do we need to have more of a conversation about cutting or not cutting, or are we, are we okay with the list, maybe cutting the water one, but leaving everything else? I mean, where did we come down on that?
Leave the water on there.
Leave it?
Yeah? Okay.
I will say, from my public engagement standpoint, I know it's a long list, nine is, is reasonable, I think, for people to rank.
Yeah, I don't think it's, yeah, I agree.
I also am going to just ask my wonderful Assistant City Manager, will you take notes as the mayor talks about her edits? Because my computer died, and I can't write, and I want to be on my phone.
So I only have one, I guess I've.
Yeah.
I would replay, I would reword the park one to be something like, build a robust parks, build a robust park system for all Milwaukians, or something like that. I don't think it's about, or develop, I don't want to get into so much building, because I don't want it to all be about Milwaukee Bay Park. I want it to be about the system too. So I guess, develop priority parks project, sounds to me like it's about.
To building.
Building parks, and it's not about resolving the.
Sure.
Systematic questions that are out there.
Ensure a robust park system in Milwaukee.
Yeah, something like that. Something like that. Otherwise, my, I had a couple, on the financial stability one, I would say, achieve governmental financial stability in order to maintain services and programs, or something like that. So that it, it makes clear that there's a question about our ability to maintain services.
Yeah, okay.
And then the one I just wanted to ask, and I don't feel strongly about, but the help Milwaukians most in need, a lot of that is not in our bailiwick. I mean, it's things we do with partners, like the county. So do we need to say that in the goal statement? Like, work with other partners to help, something like that?
So, I was thinking about that as well. And that's what made me think a little bit about the legislative priority, because legislative could be our advocacy to the county as well. The, I, I think, I mean, I would be supportive of adding some more definition to that goal language. Because I think that when asked, most Milwaukians would want to help Milwaukians in need. But this shouldn't be about ranking personal values versus ranking the importance of the legis, of the, of the advocacy work that we need to prioritize.
Sure.
In the county, or in the city, if that makes sense. So, I, I don't have, it's too late, I don't have suggestions for that language, but I have full trust.
We will work on something that emphasizes the importance of partnership and advocacy work there. That doesn't imply we're adding shelter bed capacity, or we're doing these things in the actual title. And gets it away from, yes, that, if some, I, I know if I was taking this in average citizen, or resident, I might feel guilty not ranking that number one, because the way it's framed. So very good feedback.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Other comments? Otherwise, Emma's good too. So she, yeah, was there anything on that last slide?
Just my, my last slide, so, so a couple updates, you should have seen this on the forecaster. We are going, we're, you had a very short regular session on January 7th, couple swearing ins, some other, oops, some business stuff. And then we're going to adjourn that early, or adjourn that at 6:00, and then go right into a Town Hall in this space. Counselor Savage George, I appreciated what you said about those kind of qualitative conversations being really important, working with my fantastic engagement team on the event plan for that. We envision it as kind of stations on each goal idea, that either staff are kind of facilitating, or you are at, hearing from people, engaging with them, hearing their ideas. And then we'll, at the end, the kind of the last thing, we'll be asking them to do the Engage survey, so we get all their data put in in that same place too. But I think that will be a really, we'll advertise the heck out of it. And then we're going to come back together at the retreat. The last kind of question I had for you, we had a few talks about dates for that, and I believe it was Counselor Anderson that maybe had some conflicts. So, I wanted to see if everyone was available the afternoon of Friday, the 31st, and then the day of February 1st. So that's a Friday afternoon and evening, we would do a dinner on Friday, and then the Saturday, the 1st. Counselor Anderson, you're the one I'm really looking at, if that works for you.
I can make that work. Yep.
You are wonderful. Still researching locations, I'll pick that this month. It will be in the city limits, because it has to be, but it'll be wonderful. And directors will be there as well. I'll facilitate it in-house, and we'll run it like we do our other retreats, we'll publicly notice it, but it will not be broadcast. Okay. That's it.
Real quick, sorry, real quick, just on, going back to the, the goal titles, those aren't like the final names of what those goal ideas would be, right? Like, can we, because like, like for, for the affordability, like enhanced community affordability, I'd rather say something like develop, develop programs that reduce the cost of living, or something like.
So this is what I was.
A different title for that.
This is what I was proposing putting out to the public. So if you have feedback on different wording, I'd like to hear it now, because I'd like to get this Engage page up next week.
Yeah, I, I like to refer, because affordability, the term can be kind of broad, I think cost of living would be a better term to use. So like, develop programs to reduce the cost of living.
The cost of living?
Or improve the cost of living.
What do others think about that?
I, I guess I worry that that implies more of the, that more of that is under our control than it really is.
I mean, but you can say that about climate too. Climate's not under our control, climate's the weather.
Well, climate's not under our control, because we're a little player in the worldwide system of, you know, climate change. But, I don't know, I guess I just worry about that being misleading for people, but I, I mean, I, I can live with it, I guess.
I could see it being helpful. Enhanced community affordability, if I'm being frank, I don't quite know what that means, but if we say, we're trying to tackle the cost of living, it's a separate question whether we can actually do that. Sure, Mayor Beatty, but at least it says what we're trying to do in a way that's maybe more clear as we try and market that. Is that helpful, or am I off base there?
Well, no, I mean, that'll be number one. That will be number one, because that will be everyone's concerns. But, I mean, that's okay. Yeah. Counselor Savage George?
I'm going to get real late and wonky here. Community, the affordability for residents to live in our community, that's a goal. But increasing the cost of living, or I mean, I'm sorry, increasing programs that address the cost of living for residents, those are, those are outputs. Does that, you know, like, the number of programs that you would have in place? I guess, I feel like, if we need to put some, some language around that in the questions that you're asking, Emma, so that people understand what it could be, then, sure. But, but I think that we're, we run the risk of kind of changing the way that, that we're looking at the work plan for that goal, if it's selected as one of the top three goals. Is that, am I making sense? Am I even speaking relative English now? I'm so tired.
I think, I think if it was implement programs that reduce the cost of living, you're right. That's, that's very, that, that's an output, that's not an outcome. If it was reduce the cost of living, that's an outcome. I think to the mayor's point, cost of living is so many things, and we have a sphere of influence over the utility side and the housing bit, which is two of the things that you see listed, there's the examples. I struggled with this one, I'm trying to think of a lot of different ways to frame I mean, it could be, it could be, I hear you, I love your wonkeness, Counselor Savage George. I think I would break the, the clean consistency if it was something like, implement city programs that reduce the cost of living.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking something like enhance Milwaukee's affordability.
Enhance Milwaukee's affordability.
Because if you look at the example deliverables that you have on that list, those are things that pertain to conversations that we have had here on council, that have helped to, to bring this goal area to the top of the list. The things that I, I, I don't see all of the ideas that you have brought forth, Counselor, in the last two years. But I believe that there's still space for those conversations and that innovation, because that's what you get to when you get into the, like, how this actually, how we actually attain this goal. So I would just, I would propose that we get really specific and say Milwaukee's affordability. I don't know if that makes any.
Could I?
Counselor Anderson, I think, wanted to chime in.
What I would say here is, I could see, I mean, I think this is a challenging thing. We hear often that folks want to address the cost of living, and I think it's fair to say, the toolbox that we have available as a city government does not include, like, we cannot go after grocery stores' price gouging on groceries. I think there are things that we can do to help get more money in people's pockets, and maybe it is lopsided. Like, frankly, I think housing is an area where we as a city have a large ability to make a difference. It's also, and a few of the things, I was going to talk about this more in my report, but in a few of the things that I sent out for the meeting today, we saw that housing was actually the largest driver in the cost of living crunch that people are feeling in the United States right now. And so, to some degree, if our response, if we say we want to help fix the cost of living in Milwaukee, and we end up with a lopsided. and we end up with a lopsided goal that says, well, it's going to be about 90% housing and 10% utilities and 5% maybe a really targeted program at low income folks to be able to get more money in their pockets. In some ways that reflects the nature of what we, the, the universe of options available to us as a city government. But it stays true to what you were saying, Councilor Stavenger, about trying to be more about values in the goal idea. Or like that, that abstract as opposed to saying we shall implement a three-phase plan that will do X, Y, and Z. Does that make sense?
I think so. Throwing out an idea, what about make Milwaukee more affordable for more people?
Even enhance Milwaukee affordability is, enhance affordability in Milwaukee, I mean, you could flip it. It just, it doesn't, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs a little bit.
Okay. So we can stick though with affordability rather than cost of living? Okay.
That's fine. If everybody feels better about that, then that's fine. I don't want to split too many hairs or.
Semantics after nine is a tough game. Okay. I got it. We're going. Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Now we are to the normal council report, part of council reports. So I will start with the council president.
So the Lord's Church Council met on the November 20th. Interestingly enough, half of the meeting was taken up by the NCPRD system plan. And I learned a few things. This was Aaron giving the report. And something that came up that they're doing a lot of benchmarking against Wicogon, Waukegan, Illinois. Because they have a sort of award-winning park district and everything like that. And they have a sort of a similar population and, and funding and that kind of thing. So I thought that that was kind of interesting. And so they kind of talked about some of the preliminary results that they have. But the most interesting thing is on February 8th, at 3:30 to 6:30 at the Milwaukee Center, they're going to have an outreach event with the results of the.
System plan?
System plan, okay.
That's funny.
Yeah.
I haven't told the VAC that.
Well, you heard it here first. And so that was, that was interesting. To the Kellogg Dam, we're, we're kind of in a, a catch 22 situation right now. There is a huge federal program, it's on the books now, about aquatic, the ability for aquatic orgasm, organisms to, you know, to move freely. Fish passage and that kind of thing. And so that's a big pot of money out there that, that they hope that they can tap because it's really sort of written for something like Kellogg. But they kind of have to have some, you know, local match. And so that's why, where this metro match comes in. But we're in competition with the Bird Alliance. And the Bird Alliance is relocating their, their restoration facilities, you know, over in the West Hills to a new location on 82nd Avenue. So that's the competition. I'm a little bit concerned about that because they, you know, the Bird Alliance, the old Audubon Society has a lot of local support. And so they kind of have to get, to get one, they kind of have to get, you know, some of the other. But there may be the possibility that, that the money is not, the metro money is not tied to one year. They may be able to move some of out, out years into the current year to, to fund some of both of those, those options. They, you know, they've been trying to update their financial systems. They put out a couple of bids, they got a couple of RFPs, they do not like the RFPs. They don't think that they're very good responses and they're probably going to go out again at, at some point in, in the future. Because they don't think that the, the RFPs they got were, you know, very inspiring, so to speak. And as you mentioned, Neil is back in Washington DC doing some lobbying. That's it.
Hey, Councilor Anderson?
I've got just a few things. First, for C4, I'm sure a lot of you are aware about the Rafa schedule. But for those who aren't, they'll be finalizing the grants this spring. And they're having a first kind of like collection review happening this November. So I'm sure that, or sorry, this December, I'm sure later in the month, we'll have some more interesting updates about what projects are being more seriously considered versus just a little bit of the rumor mill that's happening right now. There's also an interesting regional emergency transportation route, Phase 2 project that's going on. It really is metro counties kind of talking about escape routes and an emergency situation. If we do emergencies a goal, I think it might be some interesting ways that we could plug in there, at the very least valuable work. I sent out the governor's housing report, I was going to say production strategy. It's kind of her equivalent to that. I forget the exact title. But the report is very interesting as we think about our housing crisis in the state. The big line is we have underbuilt and housing there and about three Oregonians who have moved into the state since the financial crisis for every one unit of housing that we have built. And so the report is really valuable. There are a lot of interesting takeaways there. I encourage you all to check it out. And it really is instructive in the way that she has then constructed her budget that was just released either today or yesterday. I'm forgetting, all the days are blended together. But as we think about housing across the state, the governor certainly is, and it's valuable to try and glean what she's thinking. Last thing for me, I've started to go around and do kind of check-ins with NDAs and just offer myself up to talk to folks. I had a really good chat with folks at the Hector Campbell, at the Welling NDA, I'm going to Historic Milwaukee NDA. If anyone ever wants to join, happy to talk about that. But those have been some nice ways to do outreach. I think that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Coastal Body?
Yeah, I have a couple, actually. I went to the meeting today for the North Clackamas Chamber. Representative-elect April Dobson was there, answered some questions to the chamber. That was pretty majority of the meeting. Then they gave me about five minutes because that wasn't that important to talk about. Stuff that Milwaukee's doing, what we're working, working on. I mentioned the economic development grants. And Rep. Leg Dobson talked about this support for small business and the Sunrise Corridor funding. Mentioned that the number one priority is a massive transportation package in this session. Oregon, some interesting facts, Oregon was graded F for businesses and 28th in terms of business friendly. So Oregon is not really looked at as a business friendly state. There were some stats also given that there's more businesses being asked to leave Oregon to go to other states. Like other states are calling businesses in Oregon to try to get them and entice them to leave Oregon to go to those states. So it's a pretty dire concern. I mean, talking about revenue, I mean, more businesses that leave, the less revenue we'll have too, so that'll be another issue. But there seems to be acknowledgement of that. And hopefully Rep. Leg Dobson will be able to bring some more of the small business perspective to Salem as well. That was pretty much, that was just more of a, on, on her, an introduction on her. I also had a meeting that I went to with Councilor Anderson. It was the Island Station NDA meeting. We were invited to that NDA meeting to discuss Sparrow or to listen about Sparrow. And just, I don't, I obviously don't have the notebooks to have a bunch of the questions that they asked. But we, we did get a lot of feedback and a lot of questions. There seems to be general support for, for what that is. The, the, the issue that I'm gathering is that there's some longstanding infrastructure issues in Island Station that haven't been taken care of over the last few years that Island Station residents are, are pretty frustrated with. And all they're really asking for, from what I gather, and Councilor Anderson, correct me if, if I'm wrong, or if you heard something different. But it seems like they, they're okay for the most part. Obviously, they want to make sure what's going in there is, is good. Not everybody wanted housing. Some people wanted something different. But I felt the overall consensus was that they recognized the need. But they like more, they like the city to be, to commit to their infrastructure needs prior to, or combining that part instead of just building new houses while ignoring existing infrastructure needs that they've been clamoring for and felt like they've been going.
Such as?
They mentioned Lark Street in particular. They mentioned a lot of kids walk down Lark Street, a lot, a lot of, and Lark Street is apparently a pretty bad and pretty bad shape. Hasn't had a lot of attention done. They also mentioned a light that is on the county side of things, but a, a light that hasn't been put in. But if there's a light that's by, I believe, a bus stop where, where a lot of kids wait. They asked the county to put a light in. The county said, if you pay the electric bill, we will. So they're like, you know, that's, and I know it's, it's different from us in the county. But I told them like, you know, maybe we could at least speak to the county, maybe we can work something out with the county to, to have that done. But they, they were, they just felt, it just seemed like they felt more largely ignored from concerns that they've had over the last decade or so. And that's why they were a little bit more standoffish on this because they're like, you're going to put this here, but you're not going to take care of issues that, longstanding issues in our neighborhood. So I told them that I would, I would do my best to be there here for council. They did also ask that more councillors attend their meetings. And I know you probably attend them as much as you can, but they did ask for, you know, a rotation of councillors to get different councillors to come to each meeting. I'm sure each NDA would love to have that. Not saying that we don't already do that, but I don't know, maybe if we can set something more in stone on a rotation for these meetings, I think that would go a long way. But they, they do want to talk more about this. They do want to be more involved with it. And, and I did everything I could to let them know that, you know, this is just the early stages and, and this is kind of where we're at now. And there's going to be plenty of time. And I explained as the lane leader, I'm hoping to do a lot more town halls and open discussions. And, you know, whoever the developer is going to be, you know, I'm sure that will, you know, they're going to take into account some of the community stuff. Andy Fisher was there, he was present. He, he did, he did help answer some of the more technical issues because some people had questions about the street itself and some infrastructure, who pays what. And, and he was able to kind of fill in that and answer those questions. Not that we invited him there, he was just there. So that's pretty much in a nutshell of what, what that meeting took place. But it was a very, I felt it was a very productive meeting. They were very appreciative of the fact that we took the time to come down there and talk to them. And I saw your head go back, Justin, but just to show you that, that, you know, there's nothing that we did. We, we didn't invite Andy, we didn't tell him to come. So just, just to, just to let you know, I, I, last person I want to get upset is Mr. Garricki. I, I, I read all your emails, Justin, just so you know. I, I, I hear you, man. And then that's about it for my end.
Counselor Stavenger?
I hear you too, Justin. Well, I just wanted to share that this last Saturday, I had a great time. I was a Millie the Goose escort for the first part of the day and man, it was fun. I was not, I was not Millie the Goose. I was the Millie the Goose.
Millie is Millie the Goose? I don't know what we're talking about. There is only one Millie and it is Millie.
Clearly, clearly it's my 9:30 brain operating my mouth. So this last Saturday was SIP shop and support, which is a small business Saturday in Milwaukee. And it was a total blast. I've got, I've got one image that I want to just like, maybe, maybe we can queue that one up. Millie found somebody else out there. That is, that's our very own city manager. And that's my mom in the background. Aww. That's the city momager. So we kicked off the morning at the Milwaukee Cafe, trying to get that goose all caffeinated for the day. And it was, she, she was a busy goose, all day driving around in a little convertible, visiting all of the, yep, goose, geese can drive and fly, you know, who knew?
Do we have a picture of driving?
Of driving? There's no photo evidence of the driving, no. I do, I do have a photo of passenger Millie. Perhaps I can submit that for the, for the packet. Because I don't know how much more we have after this, but I'll try to get it to Scott as soon as I can. I just, I wanted to say thank you to all of the businesses that opened up their doors that are normally open on Saturdays. But they went above and beyond and they ran drawings and really welcomed Milwaukee in. And I, I know I was probably not the only one out there. So if anybody wants to share their favorite memory from Small Business Saturday, please don't let me hold you back. There, there's a list of businesses who participated on the Business of Milwaukee page. There were also, I, I think maybe 20 small businesses that were set up in the creators and curators market at the Milwaukee Floral location. And it was super fun, just really like a nice, I mean, it was a beautiful day anyway, but it was just a real nice buzz about town. And, and I think one big takeaway for me, aside from we have some really incredible small businesses in town, was that Millie needs to get out more. You know, I mean, people really loved, there were selfies, there were some staged photos. There were like full out like bear hugs and not just children. So it was really great. And so thank you on, on, on my behalf to all the staff who put together time and contributed Millie to the cause and, and to the businesses that we're out there to. It was really fun.
It's great to see some of that on social media. But it was never clear to me from the Business of Milwaukee page, like, how many prizes were being out and given out and when they were, you know, when the drawing was happening for them? Did all that happen on Saturday as well or is that happening after the fact?
No, each of the businesses that participated, they had their own packet. So they had their, you know, like everybody who made a purchase at the business that day, all of those got sent back to.
Kelly.
To Kelly, yeah. So I, I think if you follow their Instagram feed, there should be some announcements soon. And we ran into one family who had just moved to Milwaukee and they had their list. Like they were out and they had, it was such, it was so cool because they had never been to, I think it was at the Hello Cafe, that, that they were, you know, getting their, you know, getting their caffeination. And they had a list of places that they were going, you know, and some of the motivation there was that, you know, they were going to be entered to win some prizes. So I hope that this is, you know, the first of many years that we're able to do something like this. It was really cool and the, and the city contributed toward the prizes. So basically all the money that was contributed toward that prize pot went to buy gift cards from local businesses around Milwaukee. And then those gift cards are going to be given out to folks who participate. Yeah, it was really cool.
Great. Oh, I guess that leaves me. I don't really think, I, I mean, I sent a few notes around for Scott to add to the package. There's a lot of conversation going on about what Metro is going to do on the supportive housing services measure. I don't know if everybody got an email from Lynn Peterson today, but okay. I gather that's in response to counties mainly, but our county commission met on it last week and I think I sent a few, I watched their meeting and I sent a few notes on that. They have not been reaching out to us cities the way other county commission, or at least the way Washington County Commission has to Washington County mayors. But anyway, it's, it's moving along. We'll see where it goes. I do think, well, anyway, I, I don't think anything's going to be resolved before January. But anyway, the city manager wants to.
I, I, I promised you guys the 29th data, so when you're done, Mayor, I can give some of my 29th.
Well, I think that's really all I had. I, I had, like I said, I sent my notes around. I guess I would say just a, just a brief teaser about parks. Your Parks Subcommittee met today and has met a couple of times in the last couple of months. Your Parks Subcommittee met today and has met a couple times in the last couple months. And we will be putting parks on the December 17th agenda for a more fulsome conversation about the latest developments. And our argument, for those who haven't heard, our argument in our appeal is on Thursday. And I think Justin is going to send everybody a link to how to watch that if they are so inclined. So, okay.
Okay. Your caffeine.
And last but not least, so we implemented a speed sign, a temporary speed sign at 29th and Boyd. And I really want to give kudos to Zane Odom, Officer Zane Odom at our police department, who helped manage the installation of that crunch data for us. It, it tracks every car that registers and the speed that it's traveling. And there's some interesting insights from that. So it was up between early July, and it came down on November 18th and was moved to Oatfield and Guilford. But during that time, so the first thing is average speeds. Average speed in July was 9.6 miles per hour. So not very fast, but that's good. We don't want it to be fast, it's a greenway. By, when you go then August, September, October, November, after we put in the treatments, average speeds dropped to, it ranged between 6.8 and 6.9. So it did drop. The maximum speeds, so you're just looking at the total top, four times during the whole four-month period were like 37 miles per hour, 36 miles per hour, 42 miles per hour, and 37 miles per hour. But those were the four, four instances, four outliers, so four.
Were they measuring on 29th or on Boyd?
On 29th.
On 29th, okay.
Then what Zane looks at is the average maximum speed. So the ones I just read to you are like the, the total outliers, the peak of the graph. If you just look at the average max, in July, it was 16 miles per hour, and then it kept dropping. Then it was 15.3, 15.1, 14.89. So that's the average of the, taking the max of each day.
Oh, I see. Max, okay, daily max.
So, yep.
So then how did you get the nine miles an hour? What was, what was the nine?
That is just if you average every speed. All, every, the really slow guys, the faster guys, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I will email this all out too. But I think the punchline is the vast, 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 vast majority of cars are going very slow. We are seeing some even slower behavior. Zane just said, as our traffic, one of our traffic patrol officers, that he feels traffic has slowed and made the area safer. And, yeah, so good news.
That is good news.
That is. So some of these, because we got comment about Boyd, and we got comment about, I mean, obviously the stop sign and stuff. So the ones where they're, we're getting some of these, are these like just the one-offs that they're seeing?
I think they're one-offs. I will also say, you know, I really want to be sensitive to, we do traffic studies, or this is an informal traffic study, this is just ongoing data, because quantitative data is really useful. That also doesn't mean that people's perceptions and experiences are invalid. So, you know, they may, and this was, this was a point. This is 29th and Boyd, maybe you're four blocks down and you're seeing something different. So I really don't want to say that I'm trying to invalidate any of the comments we've received. This has, this is not uncommon when we, you know, get a lot of comments, and maybe the data shows something different. But I do find the trends pretty encouraging of what's happened as those treatments have gone, gone in.
I mean, I guess, you know, from all, looking at from the vantage point of all the people who are advocating for stop signs, I'd be interested to see them replicate this looking the other way. Like on Boyd, maybe just south of 29th, and because it would tell us if our people's slowing down to come through the intersection. Because I, I mean, I think, you know, the speeds on 29th were one thing, but a lot of the concern was about people who don't stop.
Coming down the hills, yep. I can definitely talk to Zane about if we can redeploy, when it, when it's appropriate to one of the cross streets and see what that data is showing. I see Counselor Anderson's hands.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. I was going to say something very similar to you. I think the concern is less the speeds along 29th as opposed to for folks who are biking or walking along, not having to look both ways and be really timid about crossing the street. And so if there's some way to measure that, I think that that would be helpful.
Thank you. Council President Massey?
The speed signs, I mean, the speed apparatus, does it show the, you know, the flashing speed? Or is it just a measurement?
You can turn it on, you can, or?
I know that, but what happened?
Oh, I will have to follow up on that. I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to understand how the behavior is affected.
Sure, and what I, what I was also looking at is when we did the green paint and the sheros and the signage, what changes that might have on it.
Yeah, I understand, those are all good things. But I will just tell you, if the, if the, if the speed sign is, you know, flashing, you're doing 40 miles an hour, people are going to slow down.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
But this kind of goes along with, I've, I've done this several times, and, you know, there, there can be, again, I want to recognize people's concerns, but sometimes there can be some unfounded hysteria about, you know, it's a racetrack out there. And every time I've done one of these things, it's sort of similar results. It's like, it's not really, although there are some outliers.
Yeah.
Well, I really want to appreciate the city for buying the speed sign and doing this. I knew that, you know, we had had one once upon a time, and I guess it had fallen into disrepair or whatever, but they're not a huge investment, and they are, and they're viable, and they can, you know, it's, I think they're a great tool. And so I'm glad the city invested in another one. Okay. Oh, yes.
Ask and ye shall receive.
Oh.
Picture of the goose in the car. And also some other businesses that participated. So these, I took these from Rosie the Realtor's page on Instagram, because Rosie was also a goose, a goose host. So there's Millie in the car.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Millie's handler.
Oh, there we go. That's great with lunas.
Oh, yeah, it was a really big one.
No, she's a passenger, she's not the driver.
Safety first. Millie was always strapped in, and, and it wasn't just the scarf. So Millie at all of these different stops, and if you look on the Instagram page, you can see video of, of them in the shops picking up different things from local businesses, and it was just great fun. So anyway, I couldn't let you leave without seeing the convertible. It's a pretty sweet ride.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You hit it.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.